It is May sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. I'm here in the Northampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell. I'm the council president, the presiding. These proceedings, as always, are being audio and video recorded. And as always, we start with public comment. Public comment is a chance for the public to speak on any issue. There's only a couple of rules. One, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Because everyone, you know, is going to get equal time. And the other is kind of a strange one. We don't respond back to you. And the reason for that is we can only discuss stuff that we post on the agenda in advance. So those are two rules. But everyone is welcome, and I have a sign up sheet. When this is done, I'll ask if anyone else wants to talk. So unlike a nightclub, if you're not on the list, you can still get in. At the top of the list is Tommy Pease from Veterans Council. The floor is yours.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Tom Pease. I live at one thirty Spring Street, Florence, Mass. I am the commander at the VFW Post eight zero zero six in Florence, and I'm also the vice president of Veterans Council of Northampton. This evening, I'm here to plug our Memorial Day Parade, which has been taking place on May the twenty-seventh this year. Last year was the one hundred and fiftieth continuously operated parade in Florence on Memorial Day, the longest continuously run parade in the country. There had approximately between four to five thousand people attended that parade and ceremony. This year, obviously, it's a hundred and fifty-first parade. Again, the longest continuously run parade in the country. We step off Monday morning at ten a.m. from Trinity Row. We will use the original parade route that's been used in the past. We'll go Main Street, Park, Pine, Maple, back around Park Street. We will have a ceremony in the cemetery at approximately eleven o'clock. Of course, we're inviting any and all people to come and join. This event takes place rain or shine. This year, along with my comrades at the VFW, we applied for, and we got approval for an eleven o'clock flyover by two F-16 fighter jets. They'll be coming out of Rhode Island, and weather permitting, they have to have a ceiling of approximately twenty-four hundred feet. Last year, we did the same thing, but it was a little cloudy that day. So, that being said, this year's theme for the parade, I've taken upon myself, along with people from the Elks, that we're going to be really promoting the American flag. We'll be leading the parade with approximately five or six American flags. They call it color guard en masse. So as a veteran and all my comrades, we're quite proud of our American flag. So we're really pushing that. Again, I'm inviting the entire community to come and join us, weather per- well, rain or shine, please come and, you know, enjoy the longest continuously run parade in the country. That being said, I'll hand over the Flag Day operation to Don.
Thanks, Tommy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donnie Ripetoe, and I want to thank you first and foremost for having me here tonight, and thank you for your service to our community. I greatly appreciate it. I know quite a bit about life of service. I am a twenty-four-year Navy veteran of the submarine service, and I'm also the Elks president, newly elected. In addition, I'm here tonight because I'm also the Field of Honor Committee Chair. Field of Honor has its heritage in nine eleven. It started as a result of nine eleven as a tribute to those who lost their lives. The first positive patriotic symbol coming emerging out of nine eleven was the American flag. To that end, that's where it started. We're running the first Northampton Field of Honor event at the Elks Lodge at seventeen Spring Street, and basically to pay tribute to veterans, service members, and first responders, and their spouses. We're the first honor field in the country to also recognize spouses. We're trying to commemorate their service and sacrifice. In our minds, one of the themes behind it is service and sacrifice forever remembered, and our honor flags help to commemorate the service and sacrifice of so many that have helped us to protect our freedoms and to help us through our everyday lives. The event starts on May eighteenth and runs through July thirteenth. We intend to have a community cookout at the end of it to invite folks to join us, and we'll retire our flags on July thirteenth and present them back to the sponsors. We feel like our honor field will encompass three main things. One will be grieving. Will be an opportunity for folks to grieve. The second will be healing, which is a real priority as well. And the third will be celebration. You know, loved ones have a chance to grieve, heal, and celebrate people that they care about the most. Each honor flag is personalized. It allows folks that sponsor them to actually put pictures on the flagpole or write about their loved one in a way that they see fit and appropriate. And the goal after this year would be to create an annual event where the community can attend, come out, and pay tribute to those that have supported us so much in our lifetime. There are a few calendar events worth talking about. There's a ceremony walk planned for May twenty-fourth, where those that have fallen, veterans that have fallen, aligned to Memorial Day, will be invited to come out, and we'll have a small ceremony there and offer a ribbon and a flower, and decorate the field accordingly for those who have, veterans that have fallen. And then, again, I've already mentioned the barbecue, and we also have a June fifteenth event for Flag Day. That's my time.
Do you want to wrap up in a sentence?
No, it's all right. I just wanted to say thank you for having me here today. I mean, you'll see the solemn array of flags. Those of past seventeen Spring Street know what's going on already. We have a few flags out here to give folks an idea or a feeling for what's happening. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your help.
Appreciate you coming in as well.
Sure.
So Steve Connor, our veterans agent.
Hi, I'm Steve Connor, the Director of Veterans Services of Central Hampshire County, and our department is working along with the Elks, VFW, and everyone else for this Field of Honor. You're all going to get an invite in your box about the twenty-fourth, and it's an opportunity for those people who want to, who have sponsored a flag, to go hang that ribbon. It's important. I'm going to be there to do that as well for my father and my uncles, who served our country, and my mother, who was a first responder. So it's a great event. The other thing I would like to just say is, you know, we had a great parade last year, the one hundred and fiftieth. It was big, it was long. This one's going to be shorter, but I'm hoping it's just as great. And so far, the participation's always been wonderful, even when the weather's not perfect. So I'm really grateful to be able to do this in Northampton and in Florence, where I grew up. So I also want people to always, always remember that Memorial Day is a solemn day to remember those that have fallen. And with that in mind, I want people to remember that we're always working on the campaign to try to end veteran suicide. Right now, it's gone from twenty-two to twenty a day, but that's still epidemic numbers, and we need to address it. Here in our community, we're addressing it by having a Veterans Lunch right down on Con Street at the World War II Club every Wednesday. And I want to make sure everyone in town knows that it's there for veterans and their caretakers. Please, if you are feeling like you want to get together with your buds, come down there. We have four World War II vets who never miss it, and we have veterans from all the wars who come down and make a connection every single week at noon. We want you to feel you're honored. That's why we do the things that we do, both Memorial Day. Oh, and just an aside, for those out there that wonder about Veterans Day, the parade is coming back on Veterans Day, right through Northampton again, with a ceremony happening at Pulaski Park. But we are planning another type of, we've had a Veterans Breakfast every year that we've had the weekend before. We're looking to actually have that on the day so that the speaker and those that come to listen to the speaker might be warm at the breakfast rather than out in the park in the freezing cold on November eleventh. So that's our hope. That's happening. But please, thank you, folks, for always helping me do my job better and honoring our veterans in the community. But we've got some really nice events coming up. But again, spread the word about the Veterans Lunch so that people get connected. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Thank you very much. Now we have, and you forgive me any mispronunciations I have, but I think I got this right, Tish Sarani?
Yes, you did. Go, Tish. My name is Tish Sarani. Some of you have known me for years. Some of you, I'm just getting to know. I used to be a business owner. I am not affiliated with the city or the schools at all. I'm sixty-four years old, retired, raising an eight and nine-year-old. I have a baby that's about to be three out in California with my thirty-six-year-old daughter, and I'm confused. I just don't get it. I talked to the school committee two months ago. I told them that things aren't going right. We, the citizens, are not happy. Where are my taxes going? My eight-year-old daughter helped me make this. My wife pays the tax bill. She's a physician in town. She wants to know where her money's going. Really? She has to balance the budget. She has a business. Here's my tax bill. I pay my taxes so the mortgage company doesn't come after me. I think we, the citizens, have to come after the city. You're not paying your taxes. You're not paying your employees. What's going on? I am so confused. Progressive city? Not anymore. I think we're regressive. We have a beautiful park that has been written up all over the country, probably the world. We're written up for all these things in Northampton. We've got this beautiful park we spent millions on. We have all these new playing fields. We have new this, but what about the teachers? No. We have new this, but what about the teachers? No. I trust the teachers. I have to. I have two kids that spend all day with them, five days a week. I just finished two years of homeschooling. I have to trust them. So when they say you guys aren't being fair, but I can't come to the meetings to know what you're saying and what you're talking about, I'm confused. But you know, I'm often confused. I'm sixty-four, okay? I don't get it. People beep at me when I drive now. Okay, I'm there. So I know I'm not allowed to sit down with either one of you at a coffee shop and say, "What's going on?" I don't get it. It's not fair. That's all I have to say. It's not fair. But if I have to come back here in another month, I might say more, and it might not be so nice. And then that tax bill might be torn up because I don't know what I'm paying for. I don't want to pay for another park, another playing field. I want to pay, I don't want to pay for a bunch of solar. I know climate chaos. I want to pay my teachers, and I want to pay them a good living wage, and I want them to be able to retire with decent money. So let's figure it out. Let's prioritize. Stop with paying for this and paying for that that's not necessary. Pay our teachers, and pay them now. Thank you.
Dinamack.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for being so attentive and respectful when I spoke here last month. It was really noted by me and by many people who spoke how, just really how polite, respectful, and attentive everyone was here. So I want to bring two things to people's attention tonight. First, that the school committee made a decision to not accept an estimated eight-hundred-thousand dollars from NACE in the sick leave buyback, which would just about cover what our teachers asked for in our last counteroffer. When asked why, the response given was that they believed there would be a rise in absenteeism, and as if a teacher would somehow cash in all of their sick time just before retirement. This response speaks volumes. It shows that to some, teachers are not considered professionals who take our work very seriously, that we don't have high levels of passion, integrity, and dedication to our chosen careers. I will say it again because it is shocking to me. Eight-hundred thousand or more dollars was turned down, which could cover much of what the cost of our wage increase that we've asked for. Eight-hundred thousand dollars of our earned time. Okay, this is sick time that we have all earned through our work. As a colleague said to the school committee, "We earn our sick time by arriving to school sixty to ninety minutes early to prepare our classrooms for activities. We stay late. We stay past six p.m. We write letters of recommendation. We assess quizzes and essays. We plan future lessons. We work on weekends. We email parents and students way into the night. I've written emails at eleven p.m. at night." We are, we are working for this time. So this eight-hundred thousand dollars that we offered to the city was earned on our own backs. The second thing I want to say is that we are choosing to go work to rule because that is our union's only recourse to bring attention to all of the time beyond our contracted hours that we put in. Everything extra that teachers and school employees do on a daily basis for our students and families. We negotiated on good faith with the city and asked for a very fair wage and wage increase and respectful contract language, and this was not met. So we are choosing to go work to rule to make a statement, not so that things that we all enjoy doing with our students do not happen, okay? Because we love doing these events. We love our students. We love the events we do. We love volunteering our time because we love our work, okay? So we choose to go work to rule because this is our picket line. Okay, work to rule is our picket line. Much of this community supported the strikers at Stop &amp; Shop. They bought their groceries elsewhere. They spread the workers' message in conversation. They spread it online. Some even stood on the picket line to help. So to this community of Northampton, I'm asking that you please see that our work to rule is our picket line. You're not going to see us online because we are in the building. You'll see us online in the mornings, and you'll see us online after school. So one more thing I just want to say is I'm asking the community and family members who will feel an urge to step in and replace the work that teachers do. They're going to want to step in in chaperone events and field trips, dances and picnics. They're going to want to step in to make sure that all of these things happen, okay? So I'm just asking you all who step in to volunteer that realize that when you volunteer to do these things in our stead, you are crossing a teacher picket line. So please do not cross the line, and instead, call the mayor and the school committee and ask them to negotiate a fair wage and fair, respectful contract language so that teachers and employees can go back to doing what we do best, putting our passion into educating Northampton's youth. So thank you.
Thank you. Is Andrea Agito here?
Yeah.
Welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm going to be really short tonight because I don't have a whole lot to say that hasn't already been said, that we all haven't already said, and are, we are keep saying. The mayor tonight is presenting a budget to you, or at least that's my understanding. I've been very much educating myself in our city civics, and I thank all of you who have been helping me with that. The mayor is going to add additional funds into the budget for what the school committee proposed in their last negotiations. And I'm just here to say that it's not enough. We appreciate it, but it's not enough to create our livable, fair wages for our employees. And so I really just want to be clear that we're not that far off. We probably need, and my disappointment was that at, two sessions ago, we asked for the numbers of what the additional cost would be because the city told us that, or the school committee told us, that it was about two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars more that this mayor was going to allocate. And he stood there and was a shining pillar and said, "I will ask the city council to add that money," and he's going to ask you that tonight. However, when I asked how much more was our proposal, no one would give me those numbers. So I attempted to figure them out myself, and in, under my calculation, it's a little more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars additional. That is not even a dent in our fiscal stability fund. So if the mayor is asking for an additional three-hundred thousand for our school committee, he also can ask for additional, an additional five-hundred-and-fifty thousand to bring us to a place where our teachers and our staff and our cafeteria workers can at least make minimum wage, and our teachers can afford to live in this beautiful city that we love. So again, I say, it's not enough, and I encourage all of you, in any way you can, and I know that there's not a whole lot, because in my education, in my civics lesson, I realized in the city of Northampton, we don't really have any checks and balances. The only checks are you can lower what the mayor puts in his budget, but you don't actually have any power to raise it. So maybe you have power to talk some sense into him. I don't know. But I hope you do, and I hope that you will stand with us as you have stand, stood with many other unions in this city, many times over again. Because we're not going to stop, and we're not going to stand down, and we're not going to be quiet anymore. Our teachers have done that many, many times, and we're not doing it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Does everyone on the list? So what we're going to do is continue public-
I forgot to put Holly Graham on the list.
Oh, no. Yeah, I'm going to call for people to come up now. Yeah, don't worry. If you, if you didn't sign up, it's okay. I thought I would just kind of reiterate some of the conventions we have in the council because I noticed a lot of people came in. I think you had a demonstration outside of City Hall, so some people came in after I said this, but just so everyone knows, the rules are three minutes for everybody. Everyone gets treated fair. Everyone gets equal time. So three rules. That's why the clock's up there. And the other rule is that we don't respond. It's kind of a strange rule if you think about it. You come to the city council, you expect your elected officials to answer you, but the reason we don't is because we only talk about stuff that we put on the agenda in advance. So just so you know that. And having said that, everyone is welcome to speak, so, I don't know, just on this side, we have people over here. I saw the hand go up here. Do you want to be first? Say if you come up, and if you would give your name. Giving your address is totally up to you, but we do ask you give your town or city of residence, please. The floor is yours.
Okay, good evening. My name is Holly Graham. I'm a resident of Northampton. I live at ninety Pomeroy Terrace, Unit One, and I also teach seventh and eighth grade English at JFK Middle School. I've taught in the district for eight years now. I haven't spoken to the school committee or to the city council. I've written very few letters because I thought, this has to work out. It just has to. Why would Northampton want to go to work to rule? I kept thinking, I can't be a teacher who works to rule. I work all the time. I actually don't know what I'll do at night. So I stayed really quiet, but I feel like I can't be quiet because of something that happened after school today, which is going to have to deal with me telling a bit of a story. I teach English, so I'm good at it. So every year, I run a contest at JFK Middle School called the Boston Globe Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Contest, and we are an institution at this point. We win awards statewide that are so significantly above private schools. We beat out every competitor that we've had. We've broken records. Some years, I've had a generous grant from the NEF, but most years, I haven't. Most years, I've done it for free. This year, we had seventeen students win, and it was a Saturday morning. It was freezing. I went to Boston. It was so cold, and I went out. I didn't even think about, God, it's Saturday, because I love this contest. I love what I do. So I went out to Boston on a Saturday like I do every single year, and I'm also super competitive, so I get there really early because I have to have the best seat in the house because I want to be there when every kid that walks across that stage, over and over and over again, they say, "So-and-so, John F. Kennedy Middle School, Florence, Mass", over and over and over again. No one comes close. I'm telling you, Milton Academy, Deerfield Academy, I shouldn't even name drop, but these schools can't keep up with a tiny public middle school in Western Mass. It's awesome. So this year, I got there early like I always do, and I snuck down underneath one of those velvet dividers that says, "No teachers and parents beyond this point," and I do that every single year, but I'm well aware that I'm breaking a rule. And this man came up to me, and he said, "I know you. You're not supposed to be back here." And I was like, "Oh, really?" You know? I lie about it. "Oh, I didn't know. I didn't see this line." And he said, "No, yes, you did. You do this every year, every single year. You sneak underneath this line. I know you. You're a teacher that doesn't follow the rules." I said, "Yeah, that's right. I am," and I actually work with a lot of people who also don't follow the rules. Because following the rules means working to a contract. Following the rules means putting in exactly what you do in the day and doing nothing else. So I've been thinking about this, following the rules, and I still wasn't going to speak, and I got home today from school, and I had this certified letter from the Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards, and here's what the first sentence says. "Dear Dr. Graham, congratulations. The Alliance of Young Writers and Artists presents the Scholastic Writing Awards every year, is pleased to present you that one or more of your students have won national writing medals. We hope you will share this remarkable achievement with your school and community." Fast forward. "Your school now ranks within some of the top one percent of all the submissions." So the reason I'm sad and the reason that I'm here is because I won't do this next year, because I'm about to become a teacher that follows the rules.
Thank you very much. So keep an eye on this side. Yes, do you want to come on up? Whoever, you can, everyone gets a chance. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sarah Simmons. I live at seventy-eight Lyman Road in Northampton, where it was an honor and a privilege to grow up. I've worked at Ryan Roads, at R.K. Finn Ryan Road School for the past ten years, and I'm speaking to you again to implore you to help your school employees. Seven years ago, I'm going to tell you a story, too, but it's not a very happy one. I'm sorry. Seven years ago, I started a series of operations to save my life. My mother died of cancer, and she asked me on her deathbed to be screened for the cancer gene. So I waited, and I was screened, and the results were positive. I was terrified. My first surgery was a short one, and I could have it over the summer. The second surgery was more extensive, and I needed to take all of my sick leave and the summer to fully recover. So I planned my surgery for May of two thousand and thirteen. My principal at the time went over my sick leave with me and made sure that I would be recovered. That same year, in March of two thousand and thirteen, my then thirteen-year-old son's father suddenly got the flu, went into a coma, and died. That year, I took all of my bereavement time and used up all of my sick time. My son suffered the following year with anxiety and illness, and there were days when he was just unable to go to school, and he needed to stay home, and he needed me to stay home. I needed all of my sick time the following year to help him through the trauma of losing his father and watching his mother for nine days in the ICU after one of my surgeries became more complicated than was originally anticipated. Why do I tell you all of this? Because this is a real-life scenario where a teacher had to use all of their sick time and was not penalized in the following year. Seven years ago, I was so grateful to work for the Northampton Public Schools. I was a proud Northampton public school educator. I was grateful to have a principal who fully supported my decision to have my surgeries. I was grateful to have accrued sick time that would allow me to have this life-saving series of surgeries. This is just one, there is just one proposal from our school committee that is disrespectful to our employees in terms of buying back our sick time. There are many. I have sat through the mayor's hour-and-a-half-long slideshow and listened while he slapped us on the wrist by stating that negotiations should not be held on public media like Facebook and email, and I ask you, where should we let the secret of our salaries be known? In that same slideshow, our mayor told us that he would allocate additional, additional funds for a fair contract. He also stated that the city of Northampton loses over two million dollars to charter I asked him then, and I will ask you now, what do you think our best defense against losing that two million dollars to charter schools is? I'm pretty sure Dr. Graham just answered that. Our teachers. In the past ten years, our city has lost eighty percent of its award-winning, first-year award-winning, green-spun teachers. Eighty percent in ten years because they went to higher-paying districts. I asked our mayor that night how he plans on retaining our high-quality educators, and I was hopeful that he would be at our negotiations, and this nightmare would come to an end. But he was not there, and the nightmare continues. I had another paragraph about my co-teacher, Lisa LeBeau, and I, and our countless hours that we spend working with our students. We have two students currently that have shown ninety-five percent growth in reading on their AMES web assessments. I have three more students that have gone from reading sixty to eighty words per minute and are now reading over a hundred and twenty words per minute, and that doesn't sound like much, but it's a lot. We were there working through lunch. We were there working Thursday nights. We were there working Thursday nights. Mostly Thursday nights, other nights as well. And we won't be next year. You can change this.
Thank you very much for those comments. So, come on up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your listening. And I know this has been very hard for all of you also. Because I know your hands are tied, but I think things can change. I will say one thing. One thing we were offered that is not fair to the cafeteria. We asked the cafeteria, the lowest wage become minimum wage. Which they did. But that means that a cafeteria assistant is going to start at the same rate as a cook. What are they offering? Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, who else would like to provide public comment? Anybody? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi there. My name's Jacob Kozlakowski. And I live on Corticelli Street in Florence. And I'm a student at Northampton High School. Um, I came really unprepared to this. I didn't think I'd be talking today. But I felt motivated with all my teachers and such about this topic. So I just wanted to talk about, um, I guess, my view on what teachers in this city do for us. Um, I personally, this semester specifically, have been, um, I guess blessed to be able to work with the teachers I have. Um, I know Mrs. Beth Adams over here is my math teacher. She has made my math experience at the school amazing. Um, she's helped me prep for the SAT, which she doesn't even have to do. Um, my English teacher, Ms. Michelle Bernhard, helped me prep for my AP Lang exam. Um, my younger sister, Caitlin Kozlakowski, goes to our schools. Um, she has Mrs. Dr. Graham and Mrs. Diana Mack, um, who she speaks very highly of. So I guess what I just wanted to say was that I find it very upsetting and kind of appalling how much our teachers make compared to surrounding districts. And I guess I'm really just worried about we're going to lose so many good teachers. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Who else have we inspired to speak who maybe didn't plan on it? Blair? We're on a first-name basis because you attend so many council meetings. So I can just call you.
I'm Blair. I live in Massachusetts. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to comment on, um, the amount of money that the teachers are asking for. And since I do attend a lot of the meetings, I, there are a lot of really high numbers pass, um, like things that cost a lot of money and they always catch my eye. And, um, learning the civic details of the city, like, is challenging. And, um, you know, I stand corrected. And, you know, I know the mayor could correct, uh, if I'm wrong about this funding. And he gets paid $90,000 a year. And for instance, like, a couple of meetings ago, there is $950,000 to construct a cold storage facility at the cemetery to store, um, vehicles and equipment for Forest Street Parks and Cemetery Division. I'm sure that's important and, um, but, uh, that is a lot of money that's there that we're spending. We did spend, or we are spending $100,000, um, if I understand correctly, on one window at Forbes Library. Um, and there is a sixty, $650,000 garage for six vehicles that the city has that's only half-heated. Um, so, yeah, I would encourage people to, um, go online and like look at past city council agendas and see, you know, what money is asked for and how we spend it and what the amount is, um, that could be important.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please.
Paula Regano-Murray. I live in Northampton. I just have one question that I realize you can't answer. Is it true that the city is about to spend $1 million to purchase Pine Grove Golf Course?
Okay. That will stand as a rhetorical question, as you point out. But thank you. Yes, come on up.
Hi, I'm Jessica LaValle. And, um, I live in Hatfields. And I am not going to speak as a teacher in this district tonight. I want to speak as a parent. I have two children who are in this district. One who is in 7th grade. And three of his teachers are here tonight. And hearing them speak, um, just made me realize that you need to hear more from parents about why we have our kids here. By school choice, my kids here because of exactly what Dr. Graham was explaining to you. Because of the exceptional quality of education that our teachers provide. They weren't getting that somewhere else. And that's why they're here. And they're learning. And next week, when we go work to rule, my son, who is struggling, will no longer be able to stay after school with Dr. Graham and Ms. Steele to get the help that he needs, that they want to give him. And that they enjoy giving him that one-on-one attention. That's why my kids are here. My daughter, she's in first grade, she's in 2nd grade now. And in 1st grade, she was picked up for Title I math. Not because she couldn't do the math, but because she lacked the confidence in her math skills. That's not going to happen elsewhere. But it happens here. We go above and beyond as teachers. And we deserve to be treated equally fair. This is just, it's completely unacceptable. It really is. And I want to keep my kids here because of them. So I really ask you to consider what we're asking. It's really not much. I have friends that make a lot more money and do the same that we do. But we're not average. Neither are they, but they're actually getting paid what is average in this state. And I moved here because supposedly this area is progressive. And this is absolutely appalling. I know you guys have heard that before, but really it is. Our kids deserve more. I want my daughter to be able to have Beth Adams as her math teacher in high school. I don't want her to leave. She is an exceptional educator. I just ask you to consider a fair wage.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please.
Uh, Susan Biggs, 98 Deerfield Drive. I've lived in this city since 1997. My daughter went through Bridge Street, JFK, and the high school. Um, I coached lacrosse for nineteen years. I teach chemistry at the high school for nine, the last nineteen years. And it's a great place to work. There's no doubt that a lot of us work there and have chosen, and many teachers have come and taken big pay cuts because it is a great place to work. We have great administrators. Um, they let us teach the way we know we should teach. But, um, I'm starting to feel average. And, um, I did, every week, it says on my board, I, uh, when I'm after school, which is just about every day, except for Mondays. I have three meetings a month on Mondays. And so there was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. And in red underneath, I said, "Come next Monday, there will be no extra help, no after-school, no tardy makeups, no test corrections, no re-quizzes." My class was dead silent. And my first-period honors chemistry is never silent. They were stunned. And they asked why, and I said, "Well, I can't talk about it." There it is. I said, "But I am pretty sure that most, all of your teachers will not be after-school for extra help." They were not very happy. Chemistry is a very hard subject and some kids need a second go at it. I'm not sure in our school day without study halls that we are talking about a flex block, um, which also we would have liked to negotiate a little bit more than the school committee would negotiate. Uh, I'm not sure when the kids are going to get their second go-round, uh, at chemistry. So it's really sad. Uh, I usually go in the building at 6:00 AM. I'm not the first. There's usually three ahead of me. Uh, and I go out the building the earliest, 3:15 on any day. But usually 4:30, 5:00. It used to be 3:30 because I had to go on the lacrosse field. But I haven't coached, uh, for four years. My daughter's graduating on Sunday from Smith and was educated very well in the Northampton Public Schools. Uh, but, and again, I too know that you can't raise the budget. But, uh, I would encourage you to do what you need to do to, um, maybe reject the budget in hopes that the, uh, school committee and the mayor will go back to, uh, the drawing board and consider, um, a better wage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Sullivan. I'm a parent and a teacher at Northampton High School. And my daughters both went through the public schools here. One of them graduated with the mayor's daughter. She got into ten out of the twelve schools she applied to. She was the first student to get into Georgetown in over twenty years from Northampton High School. So I'm also an ELL teacher. And a lot of my daughter's favorite teachers are here tonight. And my students will not be able to stay after school. They are reading at 2nd and 3rd grade levels and they're in high school. So they come after school to try and just keep their head above the water. I'm not going to be able to help them next week. It breaks my heart.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Please, yes.
My name is Beth Adams. And I've lived in Northampton for nineteen years. I have three kids who, my husband and I have three children who have gone through the schools and graduated and, um, moved on. Uh, my husband and I both teach here. I've always loved living in Northampton, loved teaching here. We chose it really deliberately. Never have looked back, never regretted it. I always just assumed that it was all working out the way it should. For years, contracts have not been very favorable. They've, there've been really low percent increases. You know, for my first six years here, I got a step increase, which was noticeable. Then I hit Step 11 in my sixth year here because I'd already taught for five years when I came. And so for the last, um, is that thirteen years, I think? I haven't gotten anything but the little cost-of-living increase. And I've just, I'm really surprised to find out how far behind we are other people doing the same jobs we do. Even if we don't talk about how good we are, how different we are, just doing this job anywhere else is valued at a much higher, higher rate. And that just seems wrong. It seems like we're at a point where the city has money that it hasn't always had. And I know there's never enough to go around and do everything that needs to be done. But it feels like our turn. And I have not felt this way in this, in this, in such a strong way in these nineteen years. I have not come to this. It feels like our turn. And if we don't do it now, I don't know when. So I, I think, I really, really beg of you to put your heads together and influence the, the people who can help make this happen. It matters a lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, anyone else? Floor is open to anyone who wants to speak on any subject, by the way. Although I imagine there's one that, you know, is on most people's minds. So, no? Anyone else? Okay. If there's no other public comment, then the council will convene and start our work. And for that, I'll ask for a role of the council, please. And the other thing I'll ask, if everyone is leaving, uh, the council chambers, I'd ask you to kind of subdue your conversation so that we can work. Thank you. Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Councilor LeBard.
Present.
Here. Here.
Here.
Uh, we are all here. So a couple of public hearing announcements. The first is announcement of public hearing. This is 1904-3. It's the document number. National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Burt's Pit Road, Petition 27859494 in accordance with the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 166 of the General Law. So a public hearing will be held on Thursday, uh, June 6, 2019 at 7:05 approximately, but not before that time, in the city council chambers. 212 Main Street, Northampton. On the petition of National Grid Verizon New England to erect poles and wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways. Uh, again, that poll petition number, 27859494 for Burt's Pit Road. So that is our next council meeting. The other, uh, public hearing that I'm announcing, and this will be announced as well, um, in the newspaper as is required, relates to our, uh, annual budget hearing. We expect to receive a budget message today from the mayor. Uh, so we're going to hold a budget hearing on two days, um, from June 5th and 6th. So by order of the city council, in accordance with Section 74 of, uh, the Charter of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, the city council will hold a public hearing to consider the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget, uh, commencing on Wednesday, June 5th at 7 o'clock here in the council chambers. Again, 212 Main Street, Northampton. And then what we're going to do is we're going to hold it open and carry it over to the next day, which is Thursday, June 6, 2019, also at 7 o'clock here in the council chambers. And the city council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. So...
One question?
Go ahead. Yes.
Just regarding the hearings?
Yeah.
Do we know a schedule of departments? Maybe you were going to...
That's what I was going to get to. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Good question. Um, so we have the department set. We've invited five of the, I think, the major departments. Um, and do we have actually a schedule, a time for each one? Or is this just a rough order?
Those five, would those five be police?
So, our administrative assistant of the city council knows far more than I know on every subject. So I would, can you help me out?
School Department, Department of Public Works, Police, Fire, and Central Services in that order.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so are there any requests from other councillors to invite other departments? I think those are the salient, important departments to ask to attend. Okay? So those are the departments. And then on Thursday, we continue to have the public hearing. And the purpose is to have another opportunity for the public to come and speak themselves on the budget too. Okay. Great. Uh, any one-minute announcements from councillors this evening? Uh, councillor Nash?
I have three. First, uh, the TPC for next week has been canceled for this month. Just so people, members of the public who were hoping to show up, um, will be taking up, um, TPC in June. Um, I have two things related to the TPC. One has to do with, um, the PVTA. Um, we'll be holding a promotion for seniors to ride, uh, the PVTA, um, starting in July. If you have a, um, if you have a senior ID from the PVTA, you're allowed to ride free. So it's a promotion to get more people riding public transportation. The other thing is this fascinating idea for the Route 44, which is the Northampton's only route. Um, we have a lot of buses that, uh, go between here and UMass and East Hampton. But this is the route that services our city. And in the past, it operated in this crescent-type fashion that it would, um, and from beginning to end, it, it, you'd make this circuit around town and it would take quite a while. What they've come up with is a concept of a, of a loop that with buses running in opposite directions, and they're going to be trying this out in the fall. That's the proposed start date. Um, if you have any interest in that, go on the, the PVTA website and you can contact people if you don't like the idea. But I, I think it's a really interesting concept. It'll really just kind of link all of Northampton in, in a new and different way.
Thank you. Is that two or three?
I only counted two.
Okay.
Two PVTA announcements.
Oh, so five from you?
Yes. There will be a joint hearing with the planning board and legislative matters meeting on the, uh, 23rd at 7 o'clock in these chambers. Uh, we're going to probably, I'm not going to presume, but probably refer about seven items relevant to short-term rentals, uh, for that discussion. And also, you'll recall, we referred at our last meeting a series of marijuana-related zoning regulations as well. We promised it to be, um, fun. So if you have an opportunity to show. And in, in this, uh, joint hearing, we will not be expecting or anticipating the presence of the transportation parking chair, at least this time. Um, also, um, I should probably give a report on, uh, the Charter Review Committee. Now, I was not in attendance, actually. I missed that. Um, but, uh, by reading the minutes, there was a, a presentation, a request from, um, ACLU attorney and radio personality Bill Newman, who came and spoke about, um, his concerns about how the Charter is written in the Division of Powers is a rather significant proposal. Um, uh, he had expressed that he felt that essentially the, uh, council in our capacity as legislators and, um, the, uh, fiduciary oversight, that we are essentially... fiduciary oversight, that we are essentially rendered figureheads. And he was trying to figure out a way he could, um, recommend changing and modifying that to, um, assign more authority to the council, was, was his suggestion. And then, and, and then I, I think I did, I did give you an update about the, um, the forum on the thirtieth of April where we discussed, uh,
Right, yes.
various proposals and elections. So those, there is my report.
Great. I, I thought the council's already dripping in enormous power as it is, but maybe I'm wrong.
It really depends on who you talk to, obviously, and, and who's doing the perceiving.
Yeah. Good, so any other announcements? Oh, councillor Klein.
I have two. The first one, I might be preempting the mayor here, but there is a forum on Wednesday, May twenty-second, that's next Wednesday, at the Senior Center, um, at seven PM, called Unlocking, Unlocking Opportunity in Assessment of Barriers to Fair Housing in Northampton. It's cosponsored by the Northampton Housing, Northampton Housing Partnership and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And it will, uh, include information from a report that was, uh, developed about, uh, barriers to fair housing in Northampton and how to, um, address those issues. So that's one thing. Um, and the other is a member of the Board of Health asked me to make an announcement that they're holding a hearing, uh, next week on Thursday, May twenty-third, at five thirty at JFK Middle School. They, it's a public hearing to address a proposed ban on smoking in the downtown business district, um, here in Northampton and in the center of Florence. They will be taking a vote that night, so they'd like to hear from the public, um, about this proposal. Those are mine.
Thank you. Anything else? So it's it, except for our, our budget hearings, which again are Wednesday, June fifth, and Thursday, June sixth, at seven o'clock right here. Great. So, hearing no other announcements. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you're here and I believe you have a communication for us this evening? And some light reading as well?
So, good evening, uh, city councillors.
Good evening.
As, uh, in accordance with the charter, I'm doing two things this evening. I'm presenting you with the, um, fiscal year 2020 proposed city budget, which, uh, is technically due to you by tomorrow, I believe. But since you had a meeting tonight, it seemed like a good, a good time to do it. And then I've also prepared a budget message, um, which is also required as part of submitting the budget. And I was going to present that to you as I try to customarily do this time of year. So, uh, again, obviously dated May sixteenth, uh, to the honourable members of the city council, I submit for your consideration and approval my proposed one hundred and sixteen million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and two hundred fiscal year 2020 budget to the city of Northampton, for the city of Northampton, in accordance with Article seven, section seven dash charter. The budget is comprised of a one hundred million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollar general fund, together with four enterprise fund budgets for water, seven million, two hundred and eighty thousand. Sewer, six million, four hundred and ninety thousand. Solid waste, six hundred and two thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And storm water and flood control, one million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. This budget proposal represents a four-point-four percent increase over the current FY twenty nineteen city of Northampton budget, expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Six years ago today, Northampton was facing a one-point-seven million dollar funding shortfall. And the FY twenty fourteen budget I proposed to city council on May sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, recommended significant cuts to city and school services, including the elimination of over fifteen staff positions in education, public safety, and public works. As I explained in the budget message that year, the ongoing structural imbalance between increased fixed costs and a lack of sufficient revenues to fund them did not allow the city to maintain its current level of staff or services. In the face of these difficult cuts, we presented Northampton taxpayers with both a choice and a multi-year plan, of which I highlighted in the FY twenty fourteen budget message. Quote, "On June twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, the residents of Northampton will have the final say as to whether these significant cuts are implemented. This city council approved a special municipal election for that date, seeking resident approval for the city of Northampton to raise an additional two-point-five million in local tax revenue above the limits of Proposition Two and a Half. If adopted, we would have the revenue capacity to close our FY twenty fourteen budget gap and restore and maintain level services over the next four fiscal years." Unquote. The voters of Northampton did indeed have their say that June. The override passed and our city implemented what has come to be called the Fiscal Stability Plan. The original plan called for filling our immediate budget gap, putting unused override funds into a fiscal stability stabilization fund in FY twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and twenty sixteen, and then using those monies to fund the twenty seventeen budget. Our projections at the time showed that the FY twenty eighteen budget would need either another operating override or significant budget reductions to be balanced. We worked hard to adhere to our plan and updated it annually with revised revenue and expenditure forecasts as part of each new city budget. The good news is that we have been able to extend the original four-year fiscal stability plan to a seven-year fiscal stability plan due to a host of factors, including greater-than-anticipated new growth, higher-than-projected building permit and motor vehicle excise revenues, significant cost savings in health insurance through our membership in the state's GIC plan. Seven years of budget stability has allowed us to both maintain our city and school staffing while making targeted staff increases to serve critical needs. Since FY twenty fourteen, through this proposed FY twenty twenty budget, we've been able to add fifty-three-point-two-seven full-time equivalent teachers and other licensed staff in the Northampton Public Schools, which has resulted in one of the lowest student-teacher ratios of any district in our area. During the same time period, we've been able to add five-point-eight-eight full-time equivalent city staff to enhance services or meet new needs in areas such as information technology, public health, senior services, and public works. The Fiscal Stability Plan has also allowed us to rebuild vital reserve funds depleted during previous recessions, both increasing our financial flexibility and resulting in an upgrade of Northampton's bond rating to AAA, which was affirmed once again late last week by Standard and Poor's. This fiscal discipline has in turn allowed us to make critical investments in our city and school buildings, equipment, vehicles, technology, paving, and other infrastructure through the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. We've also made quality-of-life investments resulting in new and improved parks and playgrounds, additional open space and rail trails, more affordable housing, expansion of hours and facilities improvements at our libraries, hundreds of new plantings and enhanced maintenance of public shade trees, investments in climate initiatives including renewable energy, bike share, and climate resiliency and regeneration, as well as a host of other initiatives while maintaining a competitive tax rate that allows us to retain and attract new businesses. This is the good news about how we took control of our own fiscal destiny and were able to achieve and maintain relative budget stability for seven fiscal years. The less-than-good news, however, is that we did so knowing that our stability was, by design, temporary and that we would one day be back facing the same decisions we faced in two thousand and thirteen. A key aspect of the Fiscal Stability Plan was stabilizing our local city finances while lobbying the governor and legislature to address some of the major structural issues with our state funding, particularly as it pertains to education. As the end of our fiscal stability approaches, however, we are still waiting for reforms to the Chapter seventy Education Foundation Budget Formula, created in nineteen ninety-three, that fails to account for the true costs of special education, health insurance, and other school costs, and underestimates the price tag of educating Massachusetts children by at least a billion dollars. We are still waiting for full funding of charter school tuition mitigation as per the law that created charters. We are still waiting for larger reforms to the flawed charter school funding model that continues to drain disproportionate amount of education funding away from local districts to educate a small subset of students at schools that are not representative of the communities they draw from. In other areas of municipal finance, we are still waiting for long overdue increases in state Chapter ninety funds to improve our roads, bridges, and sidewalks that have been level-funded for nine out of the last ten years. We are still waiting for income tax reforms, like the Fair Share Amendment or Millionaire's Tax, needed to increase state revenue fairly and progressively while taking pressure off of local property taxes. While there has been increased attention on Beacon Hill to issues like education funding reform, none of the three pending versions of the state budget offered by the governor, house, or senate would provide significant new education funding for Northampton or needed relief from the drain of rising charter school tuition. The House version of the FY twenty twenty state budget on which the revenues for this Northampton budget are based actually represents a net decrease in state aid of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars over what the city received in FY twenty nineteen. One positive source of new local revenue has been the emerging Massachusetts adult-use marijuana industry that saw its historic launch here in Northampton on November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. As one of only a handful of communities with a licensed retail store opened by the end of twenty eighteen, our city benefited from a significant share of the first quarter of local option excise tax. There are now eighteen marijuana retailers open statewide, including nearby East Hampton, Greenfield, and Amherst. The Cannabis Control Commission has another ninety-seven completed retail applications under active review with more partially completed applications in the queue. So it remains to be seen what Northampton's ultimate market share of adult-use marijuana sales will be by the time our FY twenty twenty first-quarter installment of marijuana excise tax is issued at the end of September. Based on special guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, we are using what we believe is a conservative revenue estimate of one-point-two million in marijuana excise to build this budget. This new local revenue source is a critical component of the four million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand and thirteen dollars in revenue needed to cover what are predominantly fixed-cost increases to our general fund. The largest single portion of that increase is the proposed appropriation to the Northampton Public Schools, which will increase one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, or four-point-five percent over the current year amount. This would represent the largest percentage increase to NPS in six years and is three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars higher than the budget approved by the Northampton School Committee in April. I am recommending this increase above the approved NPS budget in order to support a new collective bargaining agreement with school employees that is still under negotiation. It is important to also note that my administration is still in active collective bargaining with five out of the seven city employee unions. While current and pending contractual salary obligations to city and school employees make up a significant portion of any municipal budget, there are other fi- fixed-cost increases in the FY twenty twenty general fund, including required increases of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars, or eight-point-one-six percent to meet our retirement system assessment, a three hundred and thirty-two thousand, thirty-three dollar, or two-point-nine percent increase in employee health insurance, an increase, and an increase of eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, or one-point-five percent in debt service primarily related to a two-point-five million dollar investment in paving, and a forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollar, or five-point-four-eight percent increase in Medicare taxes. All told, fixed costs account for the vast majority of the increases detailed in our FY twenty twenty budget, with only a small portion of funds in both the city and school budgets targeted for investments in personnel or equipment needed to serve the needs of our residents and schoolchildren. This budget is the second one in a row that requires us to use override revenues from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund in order to balance the budget. In FY twenty nineteen, we used two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. And in FY twenty twenty, that amount almost triples to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four to meet our general fund revenue requirement. We have updated the Fiscal Stability Plan for FY twenty twenty and our projections show that without major changes in state or local revenue, we will completely exhaust the remaining one-point-eight million balance of our stability fund for the FY twenty twenty-one budget, but still face an estimated deficit of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This is the not-so-good news I referred to earlier and it is the same structural imbalance catching up with us that I referred to in that fateful budget six years ago when we first presented our multi-year plan. So where do we go from here? The first step is to meet our obligations for the new fiscal year that begins in forty-five days by putting in place a budget for FY twenty twenty that maintains our excellent, high-quality city and school services. The next step will be to face our financial future head-on and have a community conversation about whether we renew our Fiscal Stability Plan with another general override or instead make the tough decisions that will be needed to scale down those city and school services to match revenues that cannot keep pace. Our past practice in Northampton, like many other cities and towns, has been to put a Proposition Two and a Half override question on a special election ballot in late spring, just before the beginning of the new fiscal year. This often involves presenting a recommended budget with cuts in city and school services needed to close the gap with the outcome of the override question determining whether those cuts will happen. I propose an alternative approach. My compact with the taxpayers back in two thousand and thirteen for the FY twenty fourteen operating override was the explicit understanding that our Fiscal Stability Plan would only provide a limited number of years of stability and then we would need to decide whether or not to renew it with another. I've made a point of reminding taxpayers of this fact in every subsequent budget message and at all of many town hall budget meetings I've held every year since two thousand and thirteen. After we've completed closing out the current FY twenty nineteen budget later this summer and move into fiscal year twenty twenty, I will work the finance director to develop a plan for renewing the Fiscal Stability Plan that will include a Proposition Two and a Half general override question. In early September, I will ask the city council to place that question on the ballot for the upcoming Northampton city election on November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. This will allow the taxpayers to make an important fiscal choice for FY twenty twenty-one and beyond as early as possible to inform our annual budget writing process that begins in January each year. Please know that I do not take this step of proposing another override lightly and have worked day and night with our financial team, department heads, employees, and the city council to forestall it for as long as possible. I am committed to making the case that we must preserve our city and school services and will go out across Northampton this fall to explain our new multi-year override plan to voters and any group or organization that will give me an audience. I want to thank finance director Susan Wright for her outstanding work on this budget and her long and trusted stewardship of our city's finances. Thank you to our city's department heads and school superintendents for working to develop fiscally responsible budgets for their individual organizations. Thank you as well to my chief of staff Lynn Simmons, mayoral assistant Court Klein, and executive assistant Annie Lesko for their invaluable contributions towards putting this annual budget document together. I look forward to working with the city council over the next several weeks to answer any questions about this budget or provide additional information it may need. Copies of budget documents are available for residents to review at our two libraries and at city hall, as well as electronically on the city's website. Respectfully submitted, David Jane Arkowitz, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That very detailed budget message. And for the budget, which I know all the councillors will review very closely before our, we hold hearings on, on the budget. So thank you for, for today. No resolutions tonight, but we have another important financial matter also required by the charter. The charter requires the city council to provide for an outside audit of the city council's finances. And for that purpose, we select a CPA or a firm of CPAs to do that audit. This evening, we have Representative- This evening, we have a representative of Scanlon Associates ask you to come on up. And this is a presentation about the FY twenty eighteen independent audit. So I won't waste any more time. I'll turn it over to you to introduce yourself and end your work. Thanks for being here.
Hello. My name's Jeff Jenneran. I work for Scanlon Associates. I'm here to talk about the two thousand and eighteen audit. I do have two more copies, I think, hard copies if anyone else wants one. If not, I'll start right in.
Please do, yes.
Okay. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is just what is an audit? The audit, the objective of the audit is to give an opinion on the town's financial statements, and that's the big report here. It's eighty-five pages, so it's a lot of reading. And that's our goal. The auditor's responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement due to either error or fraud. The purpose of an audit is not to look for fraud, to search for fraud. The purpose of the audit is to give an opinion on the accuracy of the financial statements. Then it becomes, well, what do we do? What do we, how do we do this? So typically, you come here, we book a room for two weeks, that's when a majority of the fieldwork happens. Before we come, we get electronic reports from the city auditor, treasurer's office that's also here as well, give us some documents, and we'll be able to prep some of the stuff we get before we get here. We take a risk-based approach to the audit. We give internal control questionnaires to the financial team members, the treasurer's collectors office, the city auditor, the assessors, and we look at what they're putting in. Basically, it's a, what do you do? What's your policies, your procedures? Take a look at that, gives us, you know, gives us some areas to focus on. We look at their responses. It's one thing to say what they do, but we also test, are they actually doing what they say in those questionnaires? From there, we do a series of tests, analytical, and we compare, you know, last year's versus this year's. We also compare the budget amounts to what actually occurred, and that drives us to which departments we're going to look at every year. Basically, there's certain departments we will look every year because of the significant amount of money that they're handling. The treasurer's office is handling all the cash investments. Tax collector is handling all your receivables, all your tax revenue. So those two departments we're always going to look at extensively. Then we'll review some of the other changes from year to year, pick a handful of departments which will typically be outside of this building. The school department is being one of your largest expenditure-driven departments, will always go to the school department, go to public works, look at the chapter ninety program, and it will vary it up from year to year. And I think this year, we did look at the police department, public works, and we went to both schools, the administration building here, also went to Smith-Vogue, looked at the tuition revolving account, things like that. So yeah, so there's three reports, like I referenced, the eighty-five page one here, the big one. So the first thing to look at really is on page three is the opinion. So we said we based our whole audit to give an opinion. So on page three, yeah, right there towards the bottom, first, there's kind of the responsibilities of management, there's responsibilities of the auditor, then there's the opinion. What do we give, you know, the opinion? We gave an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can have. Tom likes to call it the gold standard. That's what everyone's searching for, and that's what the city's got. So that's, you know, that's, you know, the first thing to take from the report. The next part is really on page sixteen and seventeen, where you start looking into the statements. The statement of net pit, net position starts on page sixteen. These two statements are really more for accountants. I don't know how much you guys will get out of it. It's, they're full accrual, they're almost similar to what you'd see a business produce. So it's a little bit different, you know, than, than the day-to-day operations. Those will come later. But there is a couple of things to note, a couple of things you guys can take from here that are important. So way down the bottom of page sixteen, where it says net position, and then unrestricted in brackets, there's a negative one hundred and eighty-six million dollars. And that's, that's, you never want to see a negative in your unrestricted or fund balance, you never want to see a negative number. And there's two components that really make up that one hundred and eighty-six million dollars. The first is your net pension liability, which is forty-two million dollars, which you can see in the liability section under non-current. It's forty-two million dollars, and the net pension liability means retirement. So that's all your, you know, how much you are behind on fully funding your retirement. But you do have a funding schedule, and you're not alone. All communities in Massachusetts are behind in that, and you're, you know, as you go, you're catching up. So there's that one. And the OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is basically health insurance for retirees, and no one really started thinking about this or funding it till three to five years ago. And once again, everyone in the state is really behind on that. Now, the difference with OPEB is you do not have to fund it. It's not like the retirement. There's no law out there yet, and that's something that may happen in the future. And then a couple of things with the OPEB. You guys contributed three hundred and seventy-five thousand to the trust this year, giving you a total of eight hundred, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is a start to get that OPEB trust going, which means that you guys are aware of it, it's a good sign. And then also as well, the actuary, when the liability was created this year and they did their update, there was a plan that was provided to increase the amount of funding fifty thousand dollars a year, starting, I think, at two hundred and fifty thousand, escalating up fifty thousand a year. So that was, the actuary was able to give you a higher discount rate this year than last year. So they moved it from three point five percent to four percent, and by doing that, they reduced the liability fifteen million. There's some other factors in there, so the liability itself didn't change exactly fifteen million, but that, that one aspect of the actuarial assumptions made did lower your liability fifteen million dollars. So those are the entity-wide statements, which are full accrual, long-term, give you everything. And then more importantly to you guys probably is the governmental statements, which are, can be found on page seventeen, page eighteen and nineteen, excuse me. And on the bottom of the general fund on page eighteen, there's unassigned, which means you have fifteen million dollars in unassigned, and that's a component of your free cap, free cash and stabilization. So free cash right now was four point two million, and stabilization was nine point four million for a total of thirteen point six million. And also sitting there is your overlay, because the state kind of deducts the overlay when they come up with the free cash calculation, whereas for GAAP purposes, it's in there. So roughly right now, you have thirteen point six million dollars in reserves, and you have a budget of approximately ninety million dollars. So that's giving you about a fifteen percent in reserves compared to your original budget for the past year. Anything over ten percent is good, is, you know, fifteen percent is strong, and that's part of the reason why when you just had your, you know, your bond rating, it was AAA, it was affirmed at AAA, as the mayor attested to earlier. And that's something I remember coming to a meeting, it was with FinCom with Tom, and, you know, one of the councillors, I believe someone sitting over there had said, well, we're at double A plus, you know, this is back in, I think, May of two thousand and thirteen, we're at double A plus, how could we get to triple A? And me not knowing so much back then, or not knowing, I was sitting, you know, right there and just kind of said, oh, yeah, that's a good thing. I wrote a note down afterwards. I asked Tom, I said, yeah, how could you get to triple A? And he explained, just like he did at the meeting, and he was explaining to me, and I said, well, it seems like it'd be almost impossible. And he said, well, it's not impossible, but it's not very easy. And basically, that's what you've done here, and a big factor of that is the policy, the reserve policy that you guys have in place that, you know, I think when we did the audit, I got a copy from Susan, the finance director, sorry, and she gave me that, and it's great to have the policy in my hand and read through it and say, okay, this is what you plan to do, but the city actually had did it, you know. They have done it, and to steal a couple of things from the bond rating, one of the quotes is just that the city has strong budgetary flexibility, and in the past, you know, added to the reserves over the past several years. So those are two of the highlights out of the bond rating, and it's, you know, it's basically speaks to, you know, how good the financial team has been doing. So the next page I wanted to talk about was page twenty-two. So in talking with Tom, kind of look at this, and this is really what they call budget versus actual. It's non-GAAP, so we don't do any accruals, we don't do any adjustments. It's really what you guys can control in here or the budget. So how are you doing? You know, you propose this budget, but what really goes on with, you know, the city at the end of the day? And I told Tom, you know, so is this the one page we're going to take out of eighty-five pages? Is this the one page you'd rip out? He said this was the most important page, but he said with the caveat that page twenty-two with eighteen and nineteen, the ones we just talked about. So he wouldn't let me get away with saying, just rip this one page out, and that's all you need to know. So he wouldn't quite say that, but he did say this is probably the most important page in the audit report. And just to go over a couple of quick highlights, this kind of really breaks down and shows you where your free cash is coming from, okay? So, and last year, you had approximately four point two million in free cash. You voted out almost all of it, but of that, I think, one point five million, you voted into the stabilization. So you really just kind of moved it from free cash to another reserve. So that was, you know, a good policy, which I think is in the, you know, the policy that Susan gave me, to maintain the reserves at a good level and then use those for capital items, not, you know, operational, which is sound fiscal practice. And then from there, that basically started you off at scratch, you know, you're back to where you started from. And if you look at the variance with final budget column way to the right, you can see in revenues, you had two million, and expenditures, you also had two million to get to the four point five oh five. So that's basically saying, where'd you, that's your new free cash. You basically got it, half from revenues, half from expenditures, and if you go down and look at the individual line items, there's no huge jumps, and there was no one-time revenue that came in that really, you know, jumped up your free cash, that you're going to get this one year, but you're not going to get next year. So it was basically really evenly spread between all categories and all classes of revenue and expenditure. And then the only other thing which I don't really have in the report is the collection rate, which is basically when you mail out your bills, what percentage is tax collector bringing in as revenue? And you're at ninety-eight point two percent, which is very strong. So that means there's not a lot of people not paying their tax bill, there's not a lot of people going into tax title, and the ones that are are actually being paid as well. So you don't have a very large tax title balance. So that tells you that, you know, you're doing a great job between, you know, the treasurer, treasurer tax collector side and the assessor side as well. There's not a large, large amount of abatements that were issued in the past year. And that's pretty much all I have on that report. If anyone has any questions.
Yeah. Thank you. Do you want to turn it open to questions just for a second? So, Councilor Dwight.
However, there was, and I don't know, this probably predates the report, there was a big leap in some revenue recently, of course, in the marijuana payout basically of seven hundred and fifty thousand or seven four seven, I think, something like that. Is, that's, that wasn't part of your calculus.
That was not reflected, yeah, until, I don't know when that first payment came in.
Twenty nineteen, I'm sorry, yes.
This is twenty eighteen.
What? No, thank you. Right, so, but it is, is worth noting that our next audit will probably reflect that and whatever diminishing returns of that would be, but just, it may be unfair position to put you in, but can you speculate what kind of impact that would have on this written this type of report?
I don't know that there's any restrictions. I know I've seen it in a couple of places since we haven't audited it yet. I don't know if there's any restrictions, if someone else can answer that. You know, some places, there's two versions of that, and, you know, there's a, like, a host fee, then there's sales, and I don't know if some of it has to be earmarked for certain services or not, or if it's all general fund money. At this point, I'm not exactly sure.
Actually, yes, we're still working on that, so, but, okay, fair enough. It was, it's not an appropriate question at this time, so.
Any, Councilor Bidwa, please.
Yes, thank you for the report. The hundred and eighty-six million dollars of unrestricted net position.
Yeah, correct.
Of forty-two of that was unfunded retirement.
Yes.
What was, what's the makeup of the balance of that hundred and eighty-six? I, I.
Oh, sorry, it was forty-two of the retirement, retirement piece, and then one, is it one forty of OPEB.
The OPEB.
One, one, okay, that was, the whole remaining one forty was the OPEB.
Sorry, one hundred and fifty-five is OPEB, and that's also on that page above as well. If we go there to page sixteen.
Okay, I, I, I got you.
Yeah, so right above the net pension liability, forty-two million in the non-current liabilities is the one fifty-five.
Yep, okay.
And another thing to know on the retirement liability, you guys had a great year, investments over there at the retirement system, so I think you earned twenty percent. So that number really did drop this year too, which is going to kind of fluctuate with the market, but you did have a great year in eighteen.
You're saying with regard to that one hundred and fifty-five million dollar OPEB, it's likely to become law in the future that there would be a required way of.
It's possible, I, I.
Having a scheduled deal.
Yeah, I don't want to mislead you, I'm just saying it's a possibility. I've heard that talked about at conferences I go to, but it's not, as of now, it's not.
Any other members, oh, Director Wright.
I just wanted to add, the long-term plan for the OPEB liability is that once we reach full funding for the retirement system, which right now is twenty thirty-five, that we would, at, once we reach full funding in the retirement system, we no longer have to make a contribution to the retirement system. Twenty thirty-five, that will be upwards of ten or twelve million dollars a year. So what we will do at that point is shift that contribution that comes out of our regular operating budget into funding the OPEB liability. In the meantime, we're working, every budget that you've had since twenty fifteen has had a line item for OPEB, so we are slowly ramping up our contribution out of our general fund budget. But the long-term plan is to take the money that's being used to bring the retirement system to full funding and then shift that to OPEB, so.
She writes the FY twenty thirty-six budget.
I can hardly wait. There's space dollars. Who else? Any member of the council want to ask a question from our Chair of the Finance Committee?
No, but you have more, you have more audits.
More audits to go through, Ted.
Yes, you do.
Yes. Okay, so that's, that's our big one. The next report, I think, is sixteen pages, thirteen pages, and that's the audit of federal awards, and that's one that triggers, triggers an audit. I mean, you're probably also triggered by borrowing covenants, continuing disclosure of debt, but also as well, any community that gets over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal awards has to, is required to get an audit, and they call that a single audit. And in this report, there's only a couple of things to really take from. Go to page eleven. It gives you the total amount of all federal expenditures you had during the year. So you had roughly a little bit under six million dollars in federal expenditures from all, and this gives you all the departments of the federal government that you receive money from, breaks it down, there's even a catalog number, and there's, it's tested, and there's a separate compliance supplement that we have to follow to test on each one that we select. We don't select all six million dollars. There's a matrix where you go through and select whatever ones, you know, are considered major programs, and there's low risk versus high risk, there's a lot of things that go into it. And then on page thirteen, you see the three major programs that were tested. There is the Community Development Block Grants, which typically is so large, it'll get tested every year. U.S. Department of Education, the Special Education Cluster, another very large program that gets audited most years. And then the third one, which was a newer program, was Department of Transportation, and I believe that was the Valley Bike Share, that was tested this past year as well. And there was no material weaknesses or any findings, so, you know, the grant manager So, you know, the grant management was solid, there was no issues that we found when we tested it. So we gave, you know, once again, it was another clean opinion. And if there's any questions on that.
It sounds like it falls into the known news is good news category, mostly.
Then the last one is the management letter, and I think that's seven pages. Give or take. And there's really not much in here. All the prior years, findings, you know, the staff and everyone that we talked to, when we relayed to them, this is what we found. They've been very good at following up, trying to get all the items rectified and moving forward. So it's a good, it's a nice management report to write, because then the next year I can remove those after we've, it's been taken care of.
Good, and so that's, that would be the management letter. And so is that probably the final component that you would like to present on?
Yes. If there's any questions.
Yeah, any further questions on any of that? Well, I'd like to thank you, I think, if I sort of just alluded, you know, we're sort of scanning for red flags, and I don't really see any red flags. And that has a lot to do with our great finance director and administration of our finances in the city. And I think that Northampton, like many communities, as you point out, is dealing with a lot of major issues that are just struggling to take stock of them and do the best we can. But I feel that the city's finances are doing that and are managing those challenges well. And I think it's reflected in this, in this audit. That's my opinion. So, thank you, for helping us fulfilling what we need to do under the charter. And thanks for your continued work and for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now we're at the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the following things. At the request of any counselor, I will remove an item for a separate vote. Otherwise, there's no discussion on the consent agenda. First, the minutes of May second, twenty nineteen. Next, a number of appointments which I'll confirm with the Chair of the Committee on City Services are all for referral. So vote on these would be equivalent to sending them to City Services. All these appointments run from July twenty nineteen until June twenty twenty-two. And so to the Community Preservation Committee would be Linda Morley of two forty-four Prospect Street, Northampton; to the Housing Partnership, Patrick Bowen of ninety-five Straw Avenue in Florence; as well as Alexander Jarrett to the Housing Partnership, he is of eight High Street in Florence. Next, also to the Housing Partnership, Gordon Shaw of five eighty-two Haydenville Road in Leeds; to the Planning Board, Tess Perron Poe of thirty-two Masonic Street, number four; and finally, to the Whiting Street Fund Committee, Michael Quinlan, seven one two Bridge Road in Northampton. A motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I think you have one more item under the application.
Oh, right, thank you, thank you, Counselor. I jumped the gun. The final item is nineteen zero eight zero, an application for a second-hand dealer license for Birdhouse Music, renewal license for Sun Music LLC, doing business as Birdhouse Music, one sixty-four Main Street. The petitioner is Glenn Alper. And so now, no removals? Okay, is there a second to approve?
Second.
Second? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Close the abstentions, so that is all approved. Now we will recess for the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Laura, would you call the role of Finance, please? Here?
Present.
The first item is the approval of minutes of May second. Do we have a motion?
To approve?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so for financial orders, the first order is nineteen zero seven five. It's an order to authorize borrowing of fifteen million dollars for electrical and process upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. Been waiting for this for a while. Order that whereas in two thousand sixteen, the city finalized its comprehensive wastewater management plan, which was an evaluation of existing conditions and future needs for its wastewater collection system and wastewater treatment plant that includes a capital improvement plan to prioritize its most critical needs. And whereas the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust is a state agency that improves water quality and infrastructure throughout the Commonwealth by providing low-interest loans to municipalities, and the city applied for and received approval for inclusion in the two thousand nineteen Intended Use Plan, which details the projects, borrowers, and amounts to be financed through the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Program. And whereas the city is required to comply with all the provisions of the municipal federal and state water pollution statutes enforced by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, included but not limited to thirty-three USC Section one two five one, Mass General Law Section twenty-one, Sections twenty-six, Chapter twenty-one, Sections twenty-six through fifty-three, the Surface Water Discharge Permit Regulations, CMR three fourteen, the Groundwater Discharge Permit Regulations, three fourteen CMR five, the Sewer System Extension and Connection Permit Regulations, three fourteen CMR seven, and the Operation and Maintenance and Pretreatment Standards for Wastewater Treatment Works and the Indirect Discharges, that's three fourteen CMR twelve. Now therefore be ordered that fifteen million dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing the construction of electrical and process upgrades to the city's wastewater treatment plant, including all costs incidental and related thereto. And without limitation, all costs therefore is defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine of the General Laws as amended. And that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow fifteen million dollars and issue bonds or notes therefore under any enabling authority, including Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight of the General Laws or Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws as amended. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city unless the treasurer with the approval of the mayor determines they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws as amended. The treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amounts from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine as amended and in connection therewith to enter into one or more loan agreements and/or security agreements with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to any such loan and for any federal state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the mayor is authorized to enter into one or more projects, regulatory agreements with the Department of Environmental Protection, to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project, any premiums received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order lest any such premium apply to the payments of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Do we have a motion in Finance?
Take a motion.
Second? And the mayor is here to.
So the order is somewhat self-descriptive, but as the council knows from working with Director LaScalia on the capital plan and obviously on the sewer enterprise budget and setting the sewer and water rates over the last several years, we are on the verge of making some significant investments in the wastewater treatment plant on Hockenham Road. We've been planning for them and gearing up for them and doing a lot of the design work. We've done some raises in our rates to prepare for that. And one of the funding sources that we are, wanted to avail ourselves of is this Clean Water Trust, which is administered by DEP. It gives, essentially gives out low-interest loans for these kinds of municipal water projects. We were able to use a similar loan for the construction of the water treatment plant. And so effectively, this allows us to borrow up to that amount. And we did run it by our bond counsel, who we do sort of traditional borrowing through. And they highly recommended that we go through the Clean Water Trust process. They estimated we would save almost two million dollars versus sort of conventional borrowing, because it's sort of a subsidized program. The interest rate they anticipate on that, on that borrowing is about one point five percent is what the estimate we were given. And so we need your authorization to move forward. We got a grant award, sort of a grant award letter, if you will, from DEP congratulating us that our, you know, we had applied and our project had been put into their list of various projects that they give out. And so we want your authorization to do that as part of our ongoing work at the wastewater treatment plant.
Counselor Skira.
As you've heard, there's concern that we spend money we don't need to. Could you talk about the third whereas section that talks about the regulations? I know we often talk about unfunded mandates and regulations that we need to adhere to. Can you give a little context to what that means and what happens if we are not?
Yeah, well, I guess the first thing I would say is that in the context of discussion we had earlier, these are funds that would be paid for out of the Sewer Enterprise Fund. They would not be general fund dollars. So none of this would be paid for out of the general fund dollars that pay for city services or school services. By law, they can't be used for that. They can only be used for the utility from which the fees are collected. And this is a loan program that can only be used for water and sewer projects. So this is not twelve million dollars that we could use to, you know, fund something else or fund operating expenses. So that's number one. And then obviously, you know, from our work with the Capital Improvement Program, that, you know, we have a wastewater treatment plant whose last major upgrades were in the nineteen seventies. And it's becoming more and more regulated in terms of what we have to do to ensure that the, essentially the sewage that we have to treat before it is released into the Connecticut River, because that's where our sewage goes. It's treated at the wastewater treatment plant, and then the water is eventually released into the Connecticut River, has to meet increasingly high standards in terms of purification and testing. And so some of the upgrades that we've been working on include, you know, basically some of it's just basic upgrades to nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies era technology that is both unsafe and outmoded. And others are to install new kinds of purification systems that do meet those new requirements. So there's a whole long list, and you've, well, you've seen it in the capital plan about just what's being, you know, replaced from the different headworks for screening and grit removal, pretreatment headworks, aeration tanks, hydraulic upgrades, sludge gravity thickeners, all kinds of things like, wonderful things like that. And DEP, you know, this is part of our license, both with DEP and the EPA. And so they have to recertify our plant, and we have to, you know, get that permit renewed. And so they have reviewed all of these documents and all of these upgrades to make sure that they are going to comply with the various DEP and EPA regulations. So again, it's, it's, it's a sort of a significant public health and sanitary operation that, you know, many citizens maybe take for granted when they flush their toilet or run something down the drain or run something through their disposal. But we have to treat it. And so that's what these investments are for, yeah. So again, just to be clear, this is not money that is competing with general fund dollars. The debt service on it is not being paid with general fund dollars. It can only be paid with sewer enterprise dollars. So that's, I guess, a long answer to your question, but yeah.
Any other questions, Counselor?
What do you expect the term of this loan would be through the state program?
That's a good question. I might ask, it's twenty years? Okay, it's a twenty-year, twenty-year term is the max that they allow us, yeah.
Basically have a twenty-year plan for.
We do.
Following the wastewater treatment plant, so.
Exactly.
That's no joke, okay.
No, no, it's definitely, it's a, it's a big project that we're taking on. But again, it's something we have to do.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Counselor Bidwa.
Could you put this in the, in the timeline of how many, how many more years before we see the completion of this round of very extensive upgrades?
That's a good question. I think I'd want to, do you have a sense of that, Susan?
I have a sense, yeah.
I wonder if you have the.
This fifteen million is just phase one of what will need to be done there. And Donna LaScalia, the director, anticipates that this fifteen million will be expended over the next two years. And if you look at the capital plan, we also have additional projects of, I think, ten million. I'm going off the top of my head here, I think there's another six million. So it's a multi-phased, multi-year project. But in out years, we will be using some of the funds in the Sewer Stabilization Fund to fund some of that as well. So we're, this will be a combination of borrowing and using funds that we've already set aside. But we're using, doing the borrowing first, because at one point five percent interest, it makes sense to do that now. And then in the future, use our cash when interest rates, if they do rise, to take that. And also to make sure, we're using the money in the stabilization fund also to make the payments and the debt schedule very level so that we don't have to have spikes in the rates, that the rates can just smoothly, you know, move up as we go through this project. But it is a multi-year project, this is only one phase of it.
Counselor Klein.
Does that mean that it's not a fixed rate? If you're talking about the, the change in the, if interest rises?
No, I meant in future projects. When we, when we go out to bond or borrow for future projects, the Fed may raise interest rates.
Oh, okay.
But this particular program is a fixed rate for the twenty years.
Any other questions on this one? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The next thing we have up is budgetary transfers, as we're winding down fiscal year nineteen. And in the transfers total, and these are, again, are all in the budget, they're just moving from one part of the budget to another, is two million two hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. So it may get a little confusing, and I can tell you where it's going to and where it's coming from, but the total is two million two hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred eighty-three fifty-five. And again, this is all things that are already budget, already in one budget or another, and they're just moving around. So in the City Clerk's Department, election workers are receiving eight thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. Permanent salaries is receiving seventeen hundred and thirty dollars. In Central Services, overtime is getting fifty-five hundred dollars. Central Services salaries permanent, three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. The Mayor's Office salaries permanent, eighteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars. In the Health Department for overtime, three thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. From the Salary Reserve account, twenty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars is coming out of that to go into funds, some of these other things. In the IT Department for Software Licenses, forty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars is being transferred into that. Information Technologies salaries permanent, the forty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars is coming from there to go to the software licenses. Interest on municipal debt is getting sixty-eight thousand dollars transferred into it. Municipal indebtedness maturing principal, that's where the sixty-eight thousand dollars is coming from, that is going there. DPW roadway line painting, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents is coming out of there. And that money is going to the Highway Department, pavings and markings. So again, it's twenty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Highway Department permanent salaries is being debited four thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is going to DPW administration and engineering permanent salaries. Again, it was four thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. DPW highway permanent salaries, one hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars is being transferred out of that. Of that, one sixty-five is going into Forestry, Parks and Cemeteries permanent salaries. Snow and Ice Supplies is receiving eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Highway Department Waste Wood is transferring out twenty thousand dollars. That's going to DPW Wood Waste Disposal, twenty thousand dollars, that's where it's going. DPW Highway Site Improvements is being debited thirty thousand thirty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. That is going over to site improvement trees. Again, it was thirty thousand thirty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Wastewater Treatment Plant, Architecture and Engineering, two hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents is being taken out of that budget item. DPW Wastewater Treatment, Architecture and Engineering is. DPW wastewater treatment, architecture and engineering is getting that, $255,761.14. Wastewater treatment, computer equipment is being debited $10,282.10, and they're using it to replace equipment technology, again, $10,282.10. DPW wastewater treatment electricity is being debited $1. And that dollar is going over to maturing principal or sewer enterprise fund. On page two, Department of Public Works, Water Department, Architecture and Engineering is being debited $43,805. That is going over to wastewater treatment, architecture and engineering in another category, DPW water, computer equipment, $13,778.40, and it's going to be used to replace equipment technology, again, $13,778.40. DPW wastewater treatment park, granular activated carbon, $473,772 is being transferred out of that item, and it's, again, going over to activated carbon, $473,772. DPW wastewater, I guess that's wastewater treatment.
That's water treatment.
Water, regular water treatment, not wastewater, but water treatment. Computer equipment, that's being debited, debited $49,975.75. And also, water treatment replacement of equipment technology is being debited $3,153.31. They're using that at water to replace some equipment technology, $53,129.6. Water treatment, replace control and measuring equipment, out of that line item, line item is coming $536,130.25, and that is going over essentially to the same thing, other than ordinary maintenance, to replace those pieces of control and measuring equipment. Again, that was $536,130.25. Waste water, or not wastewater, but water treatment. Electricity is being debited $1.64, and that's going over to interest on municipal debt. Stormwater architecture and engineering is being debited $63,042.94, and that's going to be stormwater architecture and engineering for the same amount, $63,042.94. Stormwater computer equipment is being debited $6,979.60, and that's going to stormwater replacement of equipment and technology, $6,979.60. Stormwater, storm drain inflow, it's a $100,000 amount, and that's going over to stormwater drain replacement in the amount of the $100,000. Stormwater catch basin cleaning is being debited $15,000. That's going to flood control overtime, again, $15,000. Flood control, architecture and engineering is being debited, debited $89,680, and that's going to wind up, again, in flood control, architecture, and engineering for $89,680. Flood control site improvements for $244,785.79. That's going to flood control levees, still in the flood control area, $244,785.79. So, the total transfer is, from one budget item to another, is $2,295,983.55. Do we have a motion of finance? Second?
That was incredible.
And Susan, can you answer any questions about any of these line items?
There's, there's three things going on here. We're, we're shoring up some, most of the smaller amounts are just shoring up accounts. The DPW ones, Director LaScalia has been re, over her tenure, has been redoing the budget formats, and wherever you see something going from OM to OOM. OOM is other than ordinary maintenance. That's capital, and those can be encumbered and carried forward. So, she's just moving things. She also, we used to have two divisions at the waste, at the water treatment plant. There was water treatment and water operations. She has combined those into one budget, so some of these were just moving from the old two to, if you look at the numbers, they're actually different. But, I can assure you, everything with water enterprise is staying in water enterprise. Everything with sewer is staying in sewer. It's just also with the creation of the forestry parks and cemetery division in the DPW, we moved things from highway to the new forestry division. So, most of the stuff is DPW. It's all just internal housekeeping. You won't see these kind of transfers again next year because we're changing some of the way we do, do the budget.
So, for things that are being transferred from one item to the same item.
Yeah.
The move is from OM to OOM.
Correct.
So, that the money will carry over to the next year to complete the task that wasn't finished this year?
Right, right. So, the majority of those were just, they're just housekeeping.
Okay. Any, any other questions on, in finance, though?
I would just opine for the record, I'm very supportive and enthusiastic about Director LaScalia's reorganization efforts at the DPW, including the creation of the department and the mayor as well. Both of your administration, I think, that's a good, it's like to voice that.
So, to, to that item, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? And actually, Counselor Dwight was mentioning marijuana earlier, and since it's now really in the budget, we got a couple orders on marijuana. This is 1907-7, order, an order to establish marijuana community impact fee stabilization fund. Order that pursuant to Chapter 40, Subsect 5B of the Mass General Laws. The City Council hereby authorizes the creation of a marijuana community impact fee stabilization fund for the purpose of receiving and expending host community impact fees collected as part of the negotiated limited-term host community agreement with both medical and adult-use marijuana licenses. The funds will be used, subject to appropriation, to mitigate the impact of marijuana operations upon the city's road system, law enforcement, inspection services, permitting services, administrative services, and public health services, in addition to potential additional unforeseen impacts upon the city. Do we have a motion of finance? Second?
Second.
So, these are sort of two separate orders that kind of go hand in hand, and we're following some guidance we got from the Department of Revenue about what to do with this new, it's not a, it's not, the excise tax gets collected at point of sale and goes to DOR and comes back to us. So, that one, we kind of know how it works. The host agreement one is something that's negotiated. It's a five-year agreement, and there's a direct payment to the city. And so, one of the things they've suggested is that you can just establish a fund for it, and that if you adopt this and say, yes, we do want to establish this fund, and then the second vote is really just saying like, and then we want to put the revenues into the fund, that it's a place that we can keep it, and it's sort of transparent, and we have it all in one place. It can't be spent without an appropriation. This just means it could be put in there. And so, then, when we come back to you, then we, you know, would come back to you with appropriated uses for it over time. And, you know, I'm, I'm mindful because we signed a host agreement that said that these were the things we were going to use it for. And so, we want to just, I want to be able to, you know, keep track of this money as it's come in, keep track of how the money has gone out. And again, because it's a five-year, short-term revenue that's gonna not happen after five years, we don't want to treat it like it's a recurring general revenue. So, that's sort of the, what we're asking you to do, and we're slowly getting these different advisories from DOR about these things, and so, this was one of the ones we were trying to figure out what to do with it. So, and the other oddity of it is that you have to have adopted this by July 1st of the year, that before July 1st of the year in which you can then accept it. So, for example, the other, the checks we've gotten so far are sort of just in limbo land because we could, yeah, they just are going to put in the general fund, and then they'll just be flowing to free cash because they weren't budgeted. Unless we could have gone back in time and established this fund back, you know, before July 1 of this fiscal year, we couldn't do it. So, so now, we want to just be prepared and have this fund set up. And again, we, at this point, we only have one licensed retail establishment in Northampton. And again, as others come into the queue and begin operating, we don't know when that will be, you know, we have host agreements with them as well. So, we would begin to see that happen as well.
So, our recurring marijuana income is going to the general fund.
Yes.
This is the host community that's of limited time, and it's going into this reserve account.
That is correct.
So, and to come out of this account, we have to agree with you and vote the order to take it out.
Exactly.
So, we'll all know where it went.
For a budgeted project or expense or something which.
Something.
We will try to tie.
One-time things because it isn't recurring.
Community impacts on, of this, so.
Okay.
And I've been getting lots of suggestions from people.
Counselor Dwight.
Well, a couple, and it's actually, to that point, it would not be appropriate to apply these funds towards a salary, given the fact that contractual obligation would outlast the potential revenue in that.
That is the concern, yes. It's sort of like, you know, sometimes we, sometimes there are grant-funded salaries, but then, when the grant runs out, then you either have to absorb that salary or the position goes away. So, that's the, that's why we're trying to kind of keep these two things separate and not have.
The, the other thing is, the host agreements don't only apply to retail systems, right? It's also processing.
They apply to, yes, we have host agreements with cultivators, we have with processors.
Should, should the state actually complete the, the final remaining issues, like, for instance, allowing for social.
Social consumption.
Social consumption in, in businesses.
Yeah.
Those two would also be subject to the host agreement.
We, we don't know, but we presume probably so. We don't know when that's going to happen, but we presume if it's incorporated into the existing law, probably so. And then, I don't know about like point of sale, whether there'd be an excise tax involved as well. I don't know. These are all sort of uncharted.
That's true, that remains to be seen.
Yeah, so they're talking about a pilot, and the governor seems to like a pilot. And so, which means going really, really slow and at a glacial pace, so we'll see. But, yeah, that's definitely, and we do have various types of licensees that have made applications in pretty much every category. So, so, again, it's just a matter of when they will ever get through the process.
Right.
So, these are five-year, these have a five-year lifespan?
Yes.
But, for instance, Neta's five years started, but if a year from now, another one commences, that five years continues. So, I don't want people to think that this account would only be funded for five years.
Exactly, yeah.
Because as new licensees appear, their five years start.
Exactly.
It would, could flow for quite a while as we get more licenses.
It's quite possible. And the question, one of the open questions is whether.
Can be.
The commission is going to start regulating these agreements, because I know they've been asking for that authority to regulate the agreements, because there's, there's some concern within the industry that the agreements are not really being well-regulated and that impacts aren't really being demonstrated, and so, we don't know what's going to happen. Yeah.
Counselor Bidwa?
Two questions. The, these five-year agreements, presumably, they will be renewed, or is.
Stands to.
Or is it specified that it only covers the first five years?
It, it's an open question about that. We think that it could be renewed, but it's an open question whether the, whether, because, I mean, the idea of the impact fee was that you've got this new industry that's coming to town, and there's going to be these new impacts, and so, you, this is going to be some additional funds to kind of mitigate these new impacts. And so, I, I'm, most of the people that I talk to think that if, if it survives the first five years, if the mitigation fees survive even the first five years, like, there's not a court challenge or there's not. It's highly unlikely that anyone will be able to collect something, you know, in year six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. So, that's the, that's the thinking out there. So, we're really treating this as a, as a five-year thing, so, yeah.
And then, my second question, the, the host fees that have come in, in the last three years.
Yeah.
How, how, just refresh, how have those been handled in the budget?
Interestingly enough, the marijuana ones, because, well, so, the law changed midway through this process. So, there actually wasn't a host community fee, there wasn't a host community agreement for medical. There was no nomenclature, there was no requirement, there was no anything. And so, we, Neta actually voluntarily negotiated something that basically went on ad infinitum, sort of like a, sort of like a pilot agreement of sorts. But then, the law changed, and so, we're actually in the process of sort of reworking that to fit within the framework. So, it's now going to just have a five-year, you can't sign a contract, you can't sign one of these longer than five years. And we had one that was just sort of a, you know, it was a, just recited some things that, you know, we were going to do to communicate with each other and share information, and then it had an escalating agreement that went on. So, we actually, for the first couple of years, have been using it as revenue.
It's in the general fund?
Yeah, we were booking it as general fund revenue. The finance director has now moved it out of that, and, and we're going to start treating it now because we know now that it's only going to have two more years. And the law is actually retroactive, so it's not, it didn't start from the minute, so we're, so, so that one's gonna, those will end in, in another year and a half. So, that'll be your first example of a five-year ending. So, yeah, so we, sort of midstream, we've now switched that, which means we also have to absorb that general fund revenue as well as some of the new marijuana, you know, retail revenue. But that's, that's what's happening with that one. So, we actually, it's been spent in general fund just generally because there wasn't this mitigation requirement, host community requirement, it didn't exist, at least for medical. Yeah. And the medical's not taxed, obviously, so there's no excise tax either. So, pretty much that one was just the state, you know, got what it got out of licensing fees.
Right, okay. Counselor Pund?
I know this is just to establish fund, but when we're talking about impacts, I've gotten a couple of questions from constituents about what, how much, for instance, Neta has actually covered in terms of shifts of police, law enforcement. So, I'm just kind of wondering if you have a sense of how much, what the burden has been on the city, what the impact has been on the city, and how much Neta is actually doing their own mitigation, as it were.
So, Neta's definitely been doing a lot of their own mitigation directly in terms of renting parking in area lots all around them and making signage and doing, you know, outreach to the neighborhood. They've also been paying for those off-duty officers on those details. So, they've been paying that themselves.
So, 100% of that is covered by them themselves?
Yes, we have not covered any of that. And it's important for people to know that, you know, the details that happen, those are officers that are not on duty. Those are off-duty officers who get hired through a whole system, whether it's paving company, or it's the state, or whoever it is, you know, doing, I mean, they're still sworn officers, but I'm just saying that they're, we're not taking officers off the street to go stand in front of Neta. Yeah, the, the overtime passes through the city, you know, we, and we pay it to them, but the money comes from whoever's hiring, our off-duty officers. And that's just a customary practice in every, in every community and department, and especially, you know, at this time of year when there's lots of construction projects happening, that's, you know, it ramps up. So, yeah, they've been paying for all of that. And so, you know, I did speak with you a little bit about the fact that one of the, one of the things I was looking at for a couple of these installments from Neta particularly was, you know, we just paved a number of road systems in and around the Neta dispensary. It was sort of just coincidental that we did it because we were doing, you know, sections of Pleasant Street, and so, we did, you know, Hampton Avenue, we did Wright Avenue, we did Fulton Avenue, which is literally the street right in front of the dispensary. So, one of the things I've been talking with the DPW director about is that, coming back to you when we have access to the funds and saying, could we credit the paving budget for the portion of those streets that are like right in front of them and that are taking a lot of traffic, frankly, because there's a lot of, you know, people parking and driving, and, and, and so, that may be one thing when I talk about roadway impacts. And then, if we end up having to do any additional safety, you know. And then if we end up having to do any additional safety, you know, crosswalks and, and other kinds of safety measures. So that would be an example of, of, of how we might use this early piece of it. I've obviously been talking with our public health department about some of the issues that they may want to pursue. You may know that in the host agreement, there is a requirement that it's a voluntary, it's a voluntary grant program to a not-for-profit in the community that they agree to give up to $10,000 to a not-for, not to the city, but to a not-for-profit, a nonprofit that is working on responsible use and, you know, youth prevention and things like that. And I can, I guess I can tell you that the Prevention Coalition recently applied for those funds and actually was granted them by Neta. And they are going to be doing a, a safe storage campaign, basically to patrons of Neta and giving them information on how to safely store and secure your purchases so that they don't, so that children and people under 21 don't get access to them. So they've been working with. So that's an example of, you know, a public health initiative that this may support. And I know that the folks at the Prevention Coalition, I've heard from the Recovery Center, have expressed some interest in, in ways that this mitigation fund. But again, I'm, I'm also trying to make sure that we're tying it to actual impacts of the industry. And so that's going to be my, my guide. Yeah.
Council Luwberg?
Yeah. Mayor, is there any way that, as a mayor, you would know if other people have applied for licensing in this city?
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, because they have to come to me.
So how many?
Um, we, on our, if you go on our website right now, we've got a list of all of them. I think we've got about 13 applicants, but they're not all retailers. I want to be clear about that. We've got a, like, for example, you've got, you've got the Green, whatever the name of the company is, Green Healthy, Healthy Green LLC, which is now
Just Healthy.
Just Healthy, you're right, Just Healthy. They are, they've actually got multiple licenses because they've got a license to cultivate both medical and recreational. And they've also, I mean, they, they don't have a license, they've applied. And they've also applied for a license to have a co-located medical and retail dispensary. So that's like four right there. I mean, they're required to have a medical dispensary as a condition of the growing process. We've got a number of other retailers that have made applications to the commission. And again, I, no one knows how long it may take and whether those applications will actually be, you know, successfully vetted and, and see the light of day. But there are definitely other interested retailers, some who have, who are growing in other communities. We have an example of a, well, we had an example of a company that was going to be growing in another community and then doing a retail here in North Hampton. They've actually just applied to the commission to switch to a different license. That's the one in your ward on Pleasant Street. But it, but there's a retail, another retail location planned there. There's one out on North King Street. So, but again, it's unclear to me how long this is going to take. Because there, you can sort of see they're sort of like doing one here, one here, one over there, one, you know. I haven't yet seen a community that's gotten more than one yet. I'm assuming they're trying to sort of spread them around. So we don't know how long before they come back to North Hampton with another potential retailer, if they get through the process. Yeah.
Other questions on, on this one? This order? All right, then, all in favor in finance of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the, the last one we have is 19078, "An Order to Dedicate Marijuana Host Community Fees to the Marijuana Community Impact Fee Stabilization Fund. Order that the North Hampton City Council accepts the fourth paragraph of Mass. General Law Section 40, Section B, 5B, that allows the dedication without further appropriation of 100% of the host community impact fees collected as a part of the negotiated limited-term host community agreements with both medical and adult-use marijuana licensees to the Marijuana Community Impact Stabilization Fund, established under Mass. General Law Section 40, subsection 5B, to be effective for the, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2019." Do we have a motion on this one?
Make a motion.
Second? Okay, and this is just authorizing the money to go in the fund that we just recommended.
They require two separate votes. I don't know why, but it has to be two separate orders.
So create the fund and then authorize the money to go in.
There's the money to go into the fund, so.
Any questions on this one? I think we pretty much just covered it. Then hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And I think that's the, the end of our finance agenda. The only, the only thing I'd like to add is congratulate the mayor and finance director for a very clean audit for, for 18. And congratulations and a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're back in the city council. We're going to go through these pretty fast. The number of financial orders on first reading. First is 19075, "An Order to Authorize Borrowing of $15 Million for Electrical and Process Upgrades to the Wastewater Treatment Plan." Is motion approved this in first reading?
Second.
And second, any discussion on this financial order? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney? Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Council Shera?
Yes.
It is approved on first reading. Next is 19076, "An Order for Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Transfers."
Approve.
Second.
It made in seconded. Any discussion on this financial order?
Council Carney? Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
First reading. Do I hear a motion to suspend rules to allow for second reading tonight?
Uh, so moved?
Does anyone second that? It's seconded. Any discussion on the suspension of rules to allow for two readings? If not, all those in favor spending rules, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions?
Move second reading, please.
Seconded by Council Klein. Any discussion on second reading for this financial order? Then I will ask for a
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
And Council Carney?
Yes.
It's approved on, on second reading. We got Council Carney's vote on the suspension of rules or?
Yes.
We got that. And then we got you on second reading. Excellent. Now, 19077, "An Order to Establish Marijuana Community Impact Fee Stabilization."
Second.
With approval?
Made and seconded. Any discussion?
Sorry, who was the second?
Oh, I think we had Council Dwight make the motion and Council LaBarge, who was seconded. Everyone did everything.
See that?
Any discussion on this? And motion on the floor, ask for a roll.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
And Council Carney?
Yes.
Yes.
That is approved on first reading. Next is 19078, "An Order to Dedicate Marijuana Host Community Fees to Marijuana Community Impact Fee Stabilization."
Approve.
Second. And second, any discussion on this? Roll call.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
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 Approved on first reading. Order of financial orders for, in fact, on second reading. 19048, "An Order to Appropriate Free Cash to Cover Snow and Ice Deficit."
Move approval?
It's seconded by Council Nash. Any discussion on this order in second reading? We have a seconding war between two adjacent wards.
Gets ugly.
That can escalate quickly, so let's just, but we have this on the floor for second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Hearing no discussion, I'll ask for a roll call.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
That is approved on second reading. Next is 19049, "An Order to Authorize Taking, Taking of Triangular Parcel at Intersection of Riverside, Elm, and Milton."
Second.
Made in vociferously passionately seconded. Probably the finest second I have ever witnessed in these chambers. And so we're on the floor. Will we have discussion? No discussion, okay. Hearing no discussion, I'll ask for a, a roll call vote on this, please.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Approved on second reading. Next is 19061, "An Order to Appropriate Compensation for, and Authorize Eminent Domain Taking of Land of Damon."
Approve.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion about the Okay. All right, so, no discussion, so roll call, please.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
She was fast. She said yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
And Council Nash?
Yes.
That's approved on second reading. Finally, for second reading is 19064, "An Order to Appropriate Money and Authorize Takings by Eminent Domain for Damon Road Reconstruction."
Approve.
Got that, got that. Made and seconded. This actually is for Damon Road. It's not the land of Damon. Any other discussion? Our Council Nash?
I'd like to thank the mayor for these fine maps that he sent us all.
Yes.
Because they really detail all, you know, the questions we were asking last week and
I send that thanks to the DPW who actually put them together, so.
So I'll thank DPW as well.
Yes.
You're here, thank you. Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Council Shera?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
And Council O'Donnell?
Yes. We have a number of ordinance which have not yet been referred. Six, seven, seven of them. So
I'd like to move them as a group
Yes.
Yes.
To legislative matters, joint hearing, legislative matters and the planning board?
Do they need to be referred to the planning board as well or?
It is a joint hearing
Okay.
to discuss it, so yeah.
So to both legislative matters and the planning board, okay? And I'll read them into the record and for the benefit of the public, so they know where to expect. Council Dwight made this motion for 19068, "Ordinance to Amend Zoning to Add Definitions of Short-Term Rental in Owner-Ocupied Dwelling." 19069, "Ordinance to Amend Zoning to Allow Short-Term Rentals in WSP, SC, SR, and RR Districts." 19070, "An Ordinance to Amend Zoning to Allow Short-Term Rentals in URA and URB Districts." 19071, "An Ordinance to Amend Zoning to Allow Short-Term Rentals in the URC District." 19.072, "An Ordinance to Amend Zoning to Allow Short-Term Rentals in GB and NB Districts." 19.073, "An Ordinance to Amend Zoning to Allow Short-Term Rentals in the CB, EB, HB, and OI Districts." 19.074, "An Ordinance to Amend Zoning to Allow Bed and Breakfast and Short-Term Rentals in the PV District." Council Dwight moved those as a group, and it was seconded?
I don't know if it
I'll second it.
Thank you, Council, Council Bidwell has seconded that. To move as a group to both legislative matters and the planning board. Any discussion on the referral, Council Plon?
I'm just wondering if these need to go to community resources as well?
Question is, shall we punish community resources with seven ordinances? Now I'll defer to the chair.
Thank you for asking. I, since there's a joint hearing already scheduled between planning and legislative matters, I was gonna not interfere with that and let it just go directly there. We, it can't be on our agenda for Monday, so if it's okay with the rest of the committee, I was gonna let that happen. I'm seeing nods.
The motion stands. It's just a referral to legislative matters and the planning board. Any further discussion on the question of the referral of these seven? All those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So it is, all, all those are referred. Now, 18-point, these are ordinances, 18.223, "An Ordinance Relative to Parking on Pleasant Street." This is second reading. Motion to approve this, made by Council Klein and seconded by Council Bidwell. Any discussion on this in second reading? You heard about it last meeting. So we're ready for a roll call.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes. It's approved in second reading. So I got that right, right? Usually we have second readings after the first readings, but, but that was a second reading.
It was.
Yeah.
The second.
It really was.
Nailed it.
All right, we have paperwork for people to sign later. Good. Now first reading, and I see our senior land use planner is here. This is 18231, "An Ordinance Relative to Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Arrays."
Move approval?
Second.
Second, okay, fair enough.
That was very collegial of you. So it's made and seconded. It's on the floor. Get on the screen when we, we have a chance. Please.
Would you mind, I, I can just lay this out. This maybe looked very familiar to a lot of folks. It actually, in legislative matters, part, part of the problem was when this was originally introduced, it was modified multiple times. Carolyn will, Carolyn has worked very hard on this with a lot of associated groups. And not the least of which was the city solicitor, who modified some things by suggesting that they weren't legal, at least in his eyes. The public trade, the, I keep getting this public trade commission. No, the Public Shade Tree Committee was originally cosponsors, but had withdrawn their sponsorship after a planning board meeting because the planning board had endorsed a different version. By the time it came to legislative matters for the first time, we had to continue hearing because the members, there was a lot that had not been cleared up, it had not been negotiated and finalized at that point. In, in the interim, it was also discussed in energy and sustainability. The big, just to frame this, for those of you who haven't followed this, of course, this is about the removal of trees in order to establish large-scale solar arrays. And part of the driving force of Carolyn's initiative actually was that currently there, there is a backdoor loophole that would allow developers to basically clear-cut areas without any restrictions because we had no rules in place for something like this. And this, and there was, with two proposals already in play and then I think more to come, it was critical that we at least have guidelines and rules and trigger points to establish those, that would invoke those rules. The consensus and the concern is also that because you're actually talking about two systems that have one similar benefit. One, the solar energy is green and clean energy and it's renewable. And it's enormously appealing, principally because it reduces the consumption of high-carbon fossil fuel systems. But at the same time, trees are a very natural system by which we do carbon sequestration. And you had two goods competing and creating essentially a dilemma. A dilemma that, that the state has not been particularly helpful on. There is no rules relative to this. Most communities have actually been fairly vulnerable because as the more ideal property develops, solar, large-scale solar arrays tend to be open space. Farmland, of course, comes into play. But with conservation restrictions, I mean agricultural restrictions makes it very, makes it more expensive or difficult for them, so they start focusing on landlocked, forested areas. So I got an enormous education in the process of this conversation. But also I, I think what's, which is more than worth noting But also I, I think what's, which is more than worth noting is the cooperation and deep discussion and analysis done by all respective groups, including citizen groups who've been involved in this, and and the Energy and Sustainability Committee, and the Tree Committee, of course, being one of the driving forces, and most especially Carolyn. So the language that you now see reflects the end result of all those negotiations has been signed off on, I think, by everyone who's touched this so far in agreement. It is a usable compromise, and more importantly, it's one of the few zoning protections for something like this, for this new developing field essentially. And Lily Lombard, the chair of the Public Shade Tree Committee, and the Public Trade Commission, has been in consult with a number of communities, particularly in the hill towns, and considering using our regulations if this should pass as a template for their communities to protect that. So that said, that, it comes with the endorsement and positive recommendation, I think, from every committee.
Good to hear. It used to be we didn't believe that we could ever combine chocolate and peanut butter together. Proven that's not true. So you've done with trees and solar panels.
It's the nature of how you deal with competing interests, and I think we've done the best that we could given the circumstances, yeah.
Thank you. Would the planning department or the mayor, anyone like to add anything or summarize, or?
I'm not taking my name off.
So the, the trade commission's still on here, though?
Trade commission, we've yet to hear from them, but they're federal. I wouldn't wait for them.
I was, I was being too facetious.
Yeah, I know.
The Public Shade Tree Commission is still a sponsor, that's okay? Or it's not okay?
Yeah, did the...
They came back.
Oh, good.
They come back, so it has, they, they are cosponsors, I don't, because as I remember, what came before legislative matters did include their, their co-sponsorship, so.
So that's cool.
Everyone's all kumbaya.
Nice. Counselor Klein?
I just have a question about the version that we have here, because I see that it's clearly an amended version, but there was a iteration in between, I think, this one and the original that is not reflected here. Does that sound right? Because I see that where it says, you know, two acres, when it used to say five acres, and is not reflected here.
There wasn't just one iteration. There were many.
Right.
Yes, so the one you have now is sort of the final, final, so it has been amended since it was first introduced.
Okay, but we're not seeing all of those amendments essentially, is what?
Right, it was too, I think it would've, I think it would've been hard to follow all the strike through and add that, so...
So just, just I guess to follow up on what Counselor Dwight is saying. It went through so many iterations that we can't, we can't actually see all of those iterations, and it just come out from the other side, and this is something that everybody agrees on. And one of the most significant pieces that was discussed was originally it called for only when you hit that threshold of the removal of five acres of forest, and now we're down to two, and that was something that the Public Shade Tree Committee fought hard for, and I see that it ended up here, so just to kind of give my personal feeling that this was vetted really carefully, and the sign-off is a strong sign-off because it did go through so many iterations.
Thank you. And on that point, it is, it is something that I, I always want, particularly from the planning department, which I think is challenging for some of the ordinances you work on, because they're long and involved and have, you know, measurements and a lot of technical language, like, I really would like to have ordinances come from the planning department that show the existing code, and then like a track changes, so we can see not every change along the way, but the final change. I think that's important in order for us to really understand and catch the details. So that'd be my request for all future ordinances, and in fact, if it's not too much trouble, can you, can you take the final the final set of changes that you wish to see and do a track changes against the current ordinance, so we can see where the, where the changes are? That's really how ordinances should be formatted.
That's what this is, though?
For the second reading. Is that what this is? I'm not clear.
It's not in, there are the track changes for sections, but it's not the entire...
Well, you can certainly...
It's not the entire
Yeah.
ordinance for each table, because we have different tables where different uses are allowed, so this, these do provide the track changes
Okay.
for the sections that are
They do, okay.
amended, but you don't have the whole table for each of those zoning districts.
That's okay, to not have the whole table. I just want to make sure that what we're looking at, like for example, when we see this, you know, a, a page of new text, that this is, this is new text.
Right.
It's not just an amendment to...
That's right.
Okay.
So it's added to the, there's some deletions from the special permit criteria, and then that whole page of new text would be added to the special permit criteria.
Yep. Okay, as long as that's the case, and that's kind of the way we do it, so I, thank you, I appreciate it. It makes it easier for me to understand.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, please, yeah.
Oh, and I, I would just like to thank Carolyn for, because there was a number of stakeholders on this, and one group would move the cheese, and then the other would want to get a crack at it again, and I mean, it went back and forth between various stakeholders a number of times. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to get it, to get everybody that had an interest to buy into this version before it came here, because you know, we find ourselves in a position to have to make a political decision that doesn't always respect everybody that put a lot of work into it. So it was a really good thing that it all got worked out between the various stakeholders in this and came to us with consensus, so that we weren't in a position where we had to pick one over the other, or one interest over the other. You know, the people put in a lot of time, and a lot of volunteer time, and a lot of effort, and all of them needed to be respected in the process, and I'm really glad you guys worked that all out, and it came here with consensus, so we can vote to move it along and be confident that everybody that worked hard on it gets satisfied, so that's a big thing. Thank you.
Counselor Labard?
Yes, Carolyn, with this ordinance, and the problem that we had in Ward Six, first plans that came out was probably like about maybe twenty-four, twenty-five trees, and the first plan that we saw, that was just a draft that they brought in. Now that we have this ordinance, the previous owners went in and cut two-hundred-and-forty-seven trees, because the solar company did not own that property, it wasn't deeded to them. This is what initiated this problem. When I talked with Lily Lombard, we were all furious that two-hundred-and-forty-seven trees were removed at the gravel pit, Ward, gravel pit. And my question now is has the solar company brought in any plans into your office of helping out the residents on Lady Slipper Lane? They were supposed to be working with them.
They did bring plans.
Making the buffer for them. Have you seen that?
Yes, and the plans went back to the planning board at their last meeting, and I think everything has been addressed from...
So is this ordinance going to protect us now, so that when we have a solar company, say Jim owned the land, can he still, even though a solar company is in the process of buying it, can he still go in there and cut all those trees?
So it would, so there's a, a, what we call a look-back provision, so, and it's based on property, so if trees are cut on a property for a particular project, but then the land transfers ownership to someone else, and then that next person applies for a permit, there's a twelve-month look back to see what, how, what the site was before, and then that would trigger the special permit criteria, so that's how we're, that's one of the ways in which we're trying to close.
Close that, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this ordinance? Sounds like we might be ready to vote on it. So, thank you, and I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Approved on first reading. Next is nineteen zero three-nine, ordinance relative to parking on Main Street and Florence. Motion to approve this, just get on the floor, or do you want me to read it first? Okay, Counselor Klein makes the motion.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Nash, beat you to it. And so, all right, so what this is, is ordinance city council, an ordinance of the city of Northam, that should be ordained by the city council, et cetera, as follows, this is modifying section three-twelve-one-zero-four of the Code of Ordinances, so that it be amended as follows. Within that section, three-twelve-one-zero-four, schedule three, limited time parking. We make changes to two rows. First, the row that currently reads Main Street and Florence, and there is a kind of language there that just shows historical information on when it's been amended, it's not really part of the ordinance. Main Street and Florence on the northerly side, I believe. Two hours, all. So I think this is the duration of parking, the limited time parking allowed, that's my understanding. From a hundred-and-forty feet east of the easterly side of Kaiser Street to the easterly to a point change thirty to seventy-two feet west of Chestnut Street, okay? So thirty to seventy-two, and then we're gonna add the following row. Main Street and Florence, the northerly side, fifteen minutes, eight AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday, from a point thirty feet west of Chestnut Street to a point seventy-two feet west of Chestnut Street. Counselor Murphy?
Counselor Nash actually figured all this out and could explain it to us, because it's...
I couldn't the other day.
It's kind of like... But Counselor Nash got the...
Yeah, uh, okay. You have the diagram up there, this is to create two fifteen-minute parking spaces on Main Street and Florence, at the corner of Chestnut Street in front of Cooper's Corners. This was a request by Cooper's Corners, and also with full support of the pie bar across the street. And this is part of a, you know, an initiative that we're taking with the TPC to tweak things in this area, as there's been a lot of reports of parking congestion and hardship over the years, so...
And also, the Florence got changed to two-hour parking from one-hour parking. So for people running in and running out, they're competing with people that can stay there for two hours. Adding the fifteen-minute spaces is important to the merchants, because people can now stay there for two hours, so this frees up spaces for pie bar or Cooper's for people to come and go quickly.
Thank you, yeah. Anything else? What's that? Counselor Dwight?
I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, just because of any, any sense of undue influence and profound impact on my ability to do business as employee of the Florence Pie Bar, so I will recuse myself from the vote.
So noted, thank you. Counselor Klein?
I'd just like to say that this photo is so impressive in the solar array on Cooper's Corner. Just take a look at that.
It's true, didn't realize it.
No trees were destroyed.
No what?
No trees were involved.
I'm always fine with fifteen-minute parking spaces, as long as it kind of serves the general community. I mean, it does probably benefit the business, like the pie bar and Cooper's clearly, but I mean, it's downtown Florence, so I think it's useful for a lot of different people, so that's why I'd be happy to support it personally. Okay. Any other discussion? So it's on the floor, isn't it? Then we can have a roll call.
Counselor Dwight.
Obscuring.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance approved in first reading. Now we have nineteen point zero-five-two, ordinance relative to parking on Chestnut Street. Again, okay, seconded by Counselor Labard. Do you want a wave reading on this, and also defer to the chair of the TPC to explain? Sounds like perhaps
Yeah.
that's the tacit will of the council? So...
Good reading of the...
Mr. Chairman, you're...
Okay, so on Chestnut Street, there's this teeny-tiny no-parking zone that no car can fit in, and that it's, again, it's, you know, in, in relationship to Cooper's and the pie bar. It's, it's about five feet long, and people try to park there, and inevitably their car is too big for the spot, and they park too close to the person's driveway, and and that people end up being ticketed there, and there's another important component here that's going on, is you can see with, with Cooper's, their loading dock is there, and they have, they'll have large trucks back up, and they need to have that, this space clear, so that the trucks can back into their loading dock. So the proposal was to take away this space, which has been contentious, and, and just start the parking zone further up the street where there's actual space for a vehicle.
Okay. But only on one side, actually?
Only on one side.
Not on the side that Cooper's is on? That stays the same?
Correct.
Westerly side?
There is actually, parking is allowed on both sides of Chestnut there. Counselor Murphy and I have also put in a, a word to DPW to consider having it be no parking on the, the westerly side. Nobody parks there currently, because pretty much everybody assumes it's no parking, and so I, we'll see if that's forthcoming, but...
But you, this ordinance would say on the westerly side, we're changing the word both to westerly, so then Chestnut Street from Main Street and Florence to a point northerly for, northerly four-hundred-and-sixty feet, that is no, that is parking prohibited. Okay? And then on the easterly side, we add a new line, Chestnut Street, easterly, Main Street, Florence, to a point one-ninety-five feet northerly from Main Street, okay? So on that side, it's parking prohibited in a little, a little bit longer.
Right.
Okay, got it, okay.
That's a takeout, that space that isn't big enough.
Okay. So I've just inadvertently read the ordinance, sorry about that. Good, any discussion? Counselor Shara?
Not to quibble, I just want to, it's, we keep calling it a space, it's really not a space, it's just a certain number of feet, and what might be hard to see, but I know you mentioned it on this, is that there's a driveway there, so the reason that it's more than five feet when you add it to get to a hundred-and-ninety-five feet, it's because there's a driveway, and then it's the other side of a driveway. So we're just extending that no parking a certain number of feet past that driveway.
It's really not...
It's not like a space that we're getting rid of.
Correct.
It's just a certain number of feet we are including in the no parking.
There's no real spaces there, right? It's just parking between driveways and on the street.
A smart car could fit in the space that currently exists.
Standing on end.
Right, if you allow for the three feet that they're required to park away from the driveway, there's about two and a half feet left.
Right.
And, and a sign that's completely obscured by its tree. By the way, I, I, I feel comfortable in voting for this, because insofar as we're actually limiting parking, and there is no direct benefit to the pie bar, that I don't, I'm gonna take a risk on this. I invite anyone to report me, but I'm gonna really take a chance on this one and vote on this one.
Anyway, you've disclosed your relationship, so...
I've already opined, so I've, that crossed through that threshold already, so...
So any more discussion on this ordinance relative to Chestnut Street, parking on Chestnut Street? Hearing, hearing no other discussion, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved on first reading, and finally, nineteen point zero-six-two, an ordinance to amend, chapter five, of the Code of Ordinances, by amending section five-seven, special municipal employees, this is the first reading.
Approval?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded, so it's on the floor. So I, I will, this is exactly like the one that was done for the Charter Review Committee. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just read it for fun, okay? Let's see, just so we're very clear here. So, be ordained by the city council. Wait a minute, am I, am I the right one here? Because we have them for the Charter Review Committee.
This is one for the Pesticide Committee.
Got it, that's right, okay. Got it, right. That's right, okay. So this is nineteen point zero six-two, an ordinance to amend Chapter Five of the Code of Ordinances by amending section five-seven, special municipal employees. An ordinance of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, provided that the Code of Ordinances, providing that the Code of Ordinances, City of Northampton, Massachusetts, be amended by adding Chapter Five-seven of said code. It says, section, Chapter Five-seven of said code, just means Chapter Five-seven, I guess. Providing that, five-seven, Part One, Administrative Legislation, Administration of Government, Special Municipal Employees, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton and the City Council symbolizes follows. Chapter Five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, shall be amended by adding Chapter or Section Five-seven, which shall read as follows. So Section Five-seven, Special Municipal Employees. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter two-sixty-eight A, Section one N, the following positions of the City of Northampton shall be and hereby are designated as special municipal employees. This ordinance shall supersede all prior orders of the Northampton City Council designating special municipal employees, and any order designating a position as special municipal employee that is not set forth herein shall be and is hereby rescinded. So we're adding, I take it, under, or one of members of the following boards, committees, and commissions, City Council Select Committee on Pesticide Reduction. All right. And so we already have this on the floor, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Came out of legislative matters with a positive recommendation.
Okay, cool. So hearing no other discussion, we'll have a roll call, please.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Sharon. Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Approved on first reading. Any other new business this evening?
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is made and seconded. All those in favor, adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.